Work session of November 1st, 2017 at 6:00 PM to order. Roll call, please.
Your co-founder is absent. James Burton.
James Burton. Ken Jones.
Here.
Jeff Gard.
Here.
Robert Beadle.
Yeah.
Josh Halquist is absent. David Allison.
Here.
James Wees.
Here.
Your work session topic tonight is the 2018 budget preparation discussion continuation. Alan?
All right. I know Councilman Burton would like to spend some time on the exemptions and exceptions. I have handed out, you've gotten prior emails from May 16th. The original document was written and I emailed those to you, I think last week. But the pages are, it says attached, that details total exemptions taken, 35 million nearly. Where those exemptions are categorized, whether they're organizations, sales, resale, out of town, whatever. And then it gives you sort of a blow-by-blow of the exemptions and exceptions, A through double D on the compensation discount. And then there's a second spreadsheet that goes with that. The details where, you know, where we felt the real money was from. Now, singular sales over 3,000, we have that number since then. What we know is, based upon the limit of 5,000 or 7,000, where that number goes, it goes to 100 or 125. So you can write that number in there. And I think those go with the construction projects over 3,000. I think those are both tied in together to get that number. But I wanted to start with, and then, and then James, you jump in wherever you want. I just wanted to go through a little bit of budget philosophy, and this is what I've written on the board that Tina has sent to you. You know, our objective for the 2018 budget was revenue stability. Revenue is down, but at this point, I think we can sustain stability at about 9.9 million. Pretty close to 10. The thing that is the problem here is we can't support our current service delivery model. If we're going to keep our services like they are, at the level they are, we cannot support that model on 9.9 million at this time. Not saying in the future we couldn't support it with, with more years and more work and more understanding, particularly on my part, that we couldn't get there. The other thing is expenses. Our expenses are down significantly. You know, we've, we've cut, as you know, we cut our operational expenses from 2,012,000, which we identified during strategic planning as our baseline. That's where we have an adequate amount of overtime, on-call, temporaries, all that stuff to do the work that we want to do. So we kind of set that as our baseline. I believe that number is somewhere south of there, actually, but that's the number we established. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to, we're trying to, if you look at the plan and in number three, we're trying to join the expenses and the revenues into sustainability of that model. We want to increase operations dollars. We want to increase our revenue base. Primarily, I have said that I think the real growth opportunity for us is in sales taxes. And of course, we talked about having some patience, and we need to take some calculated risks to get to 2020. That calculated risk in my mind is, as I've talked about, is the events and promotions position and what that looks like. The weaknesses in the 2018 budget you'll see in the orange there are, we have a new collective bargaining agreement that will be negotiated this year. We do not have any money in this budget for a new union contract at this point. In the previous CBA, I think it was 1.5% a year over a three-year period. That amounts to, you know, $35,000, $40,000 in costs. Our current exempt staff, which is, I think, 15 or 16 positions that are exempt, this will be their second year without any increase or one-time incentives or anything in their budget. We've not budgeted any money for that. We have minimal maintenance and capital dollars, and we have absolutely no dollars for risk or economic growth. And sort of, this is my editorial. And below that, it says, "Next year, we can be assured that it will be exactly like this year." If we, if we don't have changes. Then I think our overall objective down the road is to, is the ability to provide local relief when the state increases or implements sales taxes, income taxes, fuel taxes, or other measures, including decreased aid and capital project money to the city. I think, you know, our goal should be to be in a position where we can suffer those things, and I wouldn't say suffer, we can thrive through those things by being able to give some relief locally because we are healthy. In order to do that, I believe that we have to increase our sales tax base. I would like to go, you have a budget in your packet, and I would like to have you look at page 19 to start with. And on page 19, we start with 2015, which are the personnel costs. 7.1 million, 2016 went to 6.38 million, 2017 went to 6 million, and we're now below 6 million in personnel costs. And you can see how those are broken out. 3.6 in wages and about 2.3 in, in other benefits. Page 22 has a staffing chart that shows you, we've gone from, in 2012, we had 66 staff, we're down to 59. The general fund has, since 2012, has continued to decrease. The enterprise funds, of course, which are really not part of this conversation, but included in that budget because we're concentrating on the, on the general fund, you can see that they've remained pretty static over the years and based upon fees, they pay for themselves. If you go to page 24, you can see where our revenue comes from. Comes from sales and use taxes, 33%, property taxes, 25%, and other revenues, 12%. So you can see where the majority of our revenue comes from. On the following page, on page 25, you can see where our expenditures go. I think the remarkable things that, in this graph, I think this is the best graph in the budget, because it shows you that 43% of our budget supports debt service and other, other entities in the city. I think that's a, that's a big thing. While we are a $10 million enterprise, and between the hospital and the school district, we're a $26 or $27 million enterprise overall. Of our 10 million, you can see that 4.3 million is supporting other endeavors, including our own debt. And I think that's a kind of a telling sign for us. So we're really, we're really running this whole place on about $6 million. You know, a little over $6 million, $7 million is what we're running the whole thing on. And so with that, I know that Councilman Burton wanted to talk about some of these exemptions and exceptions, and I'll let him take off.
You're to ask me this minute, I just got off, wrote, and get situated right now.
Okay. Well, I'll jump back in here and say, I've sort of, well, I, you know, I don't really want to influence any votes at the public hearing or later on, whatever you want to do, but John Stevig and I disagree slightly on this, but I think there's a real opportunity in enforcement for us to provide some increase in revenue. My, my opinion is that in order to be healthy, you know, we need to think about one and two on those budget weaknesses. We need to think about those two things as well as the shortfall. Also, I was going to point out in the budget, if you look on page 27, you'll see that we're at a $54,000 shortfall, but I wanted to point out that that shortfall is based upon the following assumptions. Those assumptions are the three ordinances you passed on first reading and the income from those ordinances. So we've inserted that revenue in here to show you what the budget looks like with those included. I think at this time, based upon what I believe our opportunities are in enforcement, if you were to consider, I think the 30 grand timely payment, to me, is sort of a no-brainer. I think that's, that's an easier one for you to consider, perhaps not. But one of those measures plus enforcement, and I think we can cover ourselves for the coming year. But the caveat also remains this. If you choose the enforcement route, it does not matter who you are, what you do, what your status is. When we're going to enforce, we're going to enforce. And everybody has to be prepared to suffer that or to work through that at the end of the day. And not have individual calls, "Why did you do this to so-and-so?" Because we're going to apply that equally, and if you choose that route, you have to be prepared to do that because we will do it that. And that has to be, and in that scenario, I'd also ask you to consider, at least on a year basis, a trial position dedicated to that purpose only. I don't know what the cost of that position is. It's going to be a little bit less, but it's going to take somebody full-time. For example, I think I sent out an email, and I don't know if I just sent it to Mr. Burton or not, but it talked about, and I've looked through some of the individual records because I have access to that information. It's proprietary. I can't share individual files with you, but I've looked at those files. And we get many, many, many of those files that simply have the initial sheet filled out with an amount and says the rest are exempted with absolutely no documentation and no ability for us to verify whether those exemptions are actually correct or not. And that's the problem with our enforcement here. And in order to do that, we're going to have to have somebody go through every one of those records. And we are going to have to have teeth in our code that allows us to require and collect that information and then enforce that when it doesn't happen. And that's the caveat with that, and then I'll stop.
Hey, James, are you ready now?
Yeah, I'm not calling.
You can, you can.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we got you, James. Go ahead.
Okay, so, you know, when I talked about exemptions and whatnot, I just wanted to make sure that we had reviewed them again and we were comfortable with what we have in our exemption. Now, there's, the only one really is significant, home heating fuel. We talked about this last call also, and I just want to remind Council that, you know, this is, this is sort of like the seasonal sales tax. At one point in time, we had a seasonal sales tax split of 6% and 3%, eventually it became 6%. Well, on the flip side, we created an exemption when diesel fuel or heating fuel was 5.55 a gallon in 2008. And we're not living in those times anymore. So I've always questioned whether it's appropriate to still have that exemption or not. Personally, I don't think it's appropriate anymore. And certainly, rather than have a new tax, I would rather look at doing away with that exemption. So that's my thoughts. I wanted to bounce that around Council tonight.
Thoughts?
Well, I don't think I would be in favor of getting rid of the home, home heating fuel exemption. It's something that helps keep the cost of living down a little bit in our town. Honestly, I'd be more in favor of the fuel tax than getting rid of the home fuel, home heating oil exemption, only because that would hit the out-of-town fishing vessels. But this hits people who live here year-round. You know, this would hit people who are living here year-round, and I don't think I could support that, is my comments.
I agree with Kenny. You've got an apartment building, you put a 6% sales tax on the fuel. That raises the cost of operation. They've got to pass it on, the heating fuels. So, I mean, it just, it escalates by the time it gets to the end user. So when you get done with the exemptions, I do have another thought I would like to share on this, our budget.
My issue with this is heating, home heating oil is a necessity. And for those who are living on a marginal edge, there doesn't.
Probably can't hear. We can't hear.
With those who are living in town on a marginal edge after a bad season or for whatever reason, or on a fixed income, there's no way to dodge that bullet really, so.
I can't hear you yet.
I'm speaking into the microphone.
There you go.
Okay. Anyway, I have issue with it because there's no way for anybody to work around that. That's kind of a necessity that is a tough one to throw taxes on.
And I guess I'll throw my two cents in there too. I agree with James that it was put in there when the rates were, or when the price of fuel was high, but, but I also would rather give that break to the, most of that money is going to the local folks and those that own properties here that have to fuel them up. So I'd rather give that break to them and find a way to tax some of those seasonal people more, or not necessarily tax, but, but collect some revenues from those other sources. So I wouldn't be in favor of eliminating that particular exemption right now, though I know that there are lots of abuses in the, in the system. I guess I'd need more of an analysis to prove that a position would pay for, for itself with that, and then, and then enough to make it worthwhile. There probably are, probably don't really want to know what those, what the real abuse is out there, but, but I know I've seen it many, many, many times at the grocery store or other places myself. And I know exactly what you're talking about on the exemptions. I think our code does already require, at least the sales tax return form says to attach a list of detailed exemptions to your sales tax form. And I know sometime, when I was doing business, sometimes I, I did that and sometimes I did not, but I'm sure there's a lot of people that, that don't for, for whatever reason. It's a lot more work and you're not given that much more credit, but with computer systems, it shouldn't be that too hard, hard of a deal. But anyway, that's my thoughts on it. I'd need more proof that, before I approve another, another position when we're talking about cutbacks already.
Yeah, understand. The way I thought about this was, at 35 million and 6%, the income recovery, if everybody's telling the truth, your recovery is zero. But if everybody's not telling the truth, your recovery is 2.1 million. Minus, minus the organizations that are clearly exempt, churches and so forth. So your recovery rate is somewhere between 0 and 2.1 million. If, if it's only 10%, if it's 10%, that's $210,000. So I think, you know, our goal is to, to be fair and to be correct, but I, you know, good point. I just don't know how to give you at this juncture absolute assurance that we can recover a position. So in the interim, I think what we, what I'd recommend is that, you know, the enforcement support to see where we can end up in the next year, you know, with what we have currently on staff. And that would be, that would be something that we try to do. We're working right now on a variety of things with the city attorney to put in place an enforcement mechanism for zoning issues. We, we, over the past years, Cordova has had some difficulty with enforcement, and we're trying to put together a good process that works. And we'd have to do the same thing with this sort of enforcement issue as we went forward. So take your price of that. So I think what I would do is I would, I would sort of put in my mind that our goal to be, through verification, to recover, you know, we could put, put some money back in the, in the sales tax recovery just for that particular purpose. And then, let's say you did the motor vehicle fuel tax for 176. You can realistically think maybe a couple hundred thousand, it should be less than 10% recovery. Maybe that's high. Maybe it's 5%. Right error on the side of caution. That'd be 276. So you know you're getting closer all the time. I know there's, I know there's a desire to cut staffing costs, and I'm, I'm there with you, but I would ask you to think about this for a minute. If we're trying to grow our events and promotions and grow our economy, if our staffing is headed in the other direction too fast, if we achieve the first goal, we're not going to be able to meet the needs of the second goal. Because we won't have enough people, we won't have the right people and enough people to do that. So I just ask you to consider that as we move along in this. And I know there are, and there are arguments all over the place, but remember, we're also on a plan. We're thinking about 2020. And I would offer to you that somewhere along the line, regardless in all of this, my portrayal of the positions to be reduced, the number of reductions in that one chart I gave you, that was based on the fact that we do absolutely nothing over the next three years in terms of revenue. So I'm anticipating that we're going to do something.
Okay, with all that in mind, and believe me, I looked at the strategic plan, so I, it's been, and Uncle Bill Walker, he wants to, he's got a billion-dollar deficit, a couple billion-dollar deficit he's got to cure. President Trump, he wants to change taxes to SALT, state and local taxes, not being able to deduct them out of our federal taxes. And with us wanting to raise taxes, so we could get hit three different ways. So thinking about it, looking at our, I call it an event developer, is, you informed us last meeting and the meeting before, that earnings at the permanent fund were 750,000. So that's roughly third quarter earnings. With the season we had for sailing, projecting 1.5 raw fish taxes. We're putting 800,000 as a budget out of those. Everything else is going to go back into the permanent fund. We're going to raise taxes on the first year of this strategic plan. So what I would like to propose, instead of making this, it's been a difficult, we've been having a lot of meetings, stressful, talking about taxes, this and that. I propose that we either take the 400 out of raw fish tax, that'd be 1.2 million, that would still leave us another 300,000 that would go into permanent fund. Or take 200 out of the earnings of the permanent fund and 200 out of the earnings of the raw fish tax. The reason I would like to go that way is it would cure all this budget shortfall. We could take all this hard work that's been done on ordinances for taxes, we could set them aside, they'll be there if we need them later. But what really strikes me is, we keep talking about future revenue. What are we going to do? How are we going to get sales tax up? How are we going to get people to spend more money? And I keep wanting to say event coordinator, but I'm thinking more like event developer. A contract that would allow enough money. You'll see the resolution coming up from the harbor to, that building will come out of the Harbor Enterprise Fund, so there's money left over there. And with the difference in the budget of the 300, I think it was 49,000? And anyway, there'd be enough there to get an event developer started this year. This budget we're developing is for 2018. So alls we're doing for 2018 is socking a bunch of money away, meeting bare bones budget, raising taxes locally, knowing that state and federal taxes are coming. Yet we're putting all this money away. So without spending all that money, with 400,000 more thousand out of raw fish tax, we can still grow our permanent fund, over a million dollars to be, if it was on track, it'd probably be 1.3 million dollars out of the, in the permanent fund growth this year. We wouldn't have to tax anybody, raise or lower, we'd have to change nothing. The exemption for the pay-on time, like you said earlier, that's a no-brainer. But the important thing to me is, we're going to do something forward for economic development. We're going to do this event developer, get it started this year. We're not going to wait a whole nother year talking about it. We have the Chamber of Commerce here, we have staff, we're not cutting anybody. Just what you're talking about there, is we can get it started now. We don't have to wait till next January to start developing new revenue. So what I'd propose is, instead of 800,000 out of the fisheries taxes, make it 1.2. The budget's balanced. We have an event developer, and then when Uncle Billy and Uncle Sam change our taxes, we're all sitting in a little better spot to absorb those.
In, in order to do earnings from the permanent fund, I would characterize your thoughts as, I think it's a little tough to say, we just, the 720,000, 21,000 will raise the permanent fund by 721,000. Just wait another second. You have 7.5 million now, and with the 721, the math tells you that you're going to have 8.2, but that's not what you have right now. You have 7.588 million. That includes the earnings from this year. So you're down to, because you've taken 2.6 million out of that fund over the last two or three years, to 876,000 last over the last two or three years to 876,000 last year. The other thing is, on, so, so in order to put that, any money from the permanent fund into the 2018 budget, you will have to have a unanimous vote, like you always have, to transfer money from the permanent fund to the operational budget. For, it has to be for capital or some other purpose like that. The second thing is on the fish tax, our average is 1.1 million. You know, our goal has been to take the highs and lows out of that. 800 is probably a very conservative number. You know, when you first started saying we could budget 1.5 million, you've only hit that number once in the last 11 years. Higher than that, it was 1.6 million. And the other thing to keep in mind is in the, in the general fund, which is the central treasury, which is all the operating money that runs the whole show from day to day, it's your cash flow. We have depleted that fund over the last two or three years to the point where, you know, like people do sometimes in their personal business, we've been, we've been juggling payments to make certain that we can pay everything on time. So, so any earnings that we have from savings, we're going to go back to replenish that fund. It's not extra money that we have. There's a comfortable cash flow number, that's about 2.4 million dollars or so that runs the whole enterprise from month to month. So it's, it's not, it's not all that available to us on any given day. In our current situation, we are somewhere between a 10.2 million dollar operation and a 10.5 million dollar operation. Our current revenue is about 9.9 million. And that's why I put these measures in place, the things that we've been talking about since May. The other thing is, you can see that I've written and read on the board is, you know, we're trying to get to a place where we can provide local relief when we have to because of those state initiatives that might come down to haunt us or to affect us. So at that ability, as we go, we need to make reductions. You know, property tax this year went up 63,000 for the community. That's, I forget the number, it's $4.97 on the average home per month in Cordova. So trying to hold expenses at bay, that's what we're trying to do. It's, it's a real philosophical, part of it is philosophical as well as a practical application, you know, of trying to get things done. But at some point, right now, if we had a quarter of a million dollar loader breakdown, what do we do?
And that's my whole point. Just what you're saying is, telling me on a, yeah, James, right after Robert. That's my whole point is if we're raising taxes this year, we have, we don't have much room to wiggle next year. We don't know what the future is going to bring us. So if we're raising our rates and raising our taxes, then we're kind of tapped out for next year. Just like they said, what if we have a breakdown? We don't know what's coming next year. It could be a bust year for salmon. So that's the idea of getting this event thing going this year, not bumping our taxes up to the point where we're, we're against the wall there that we're going to have to dip heavily into the permanent fund. If we do, and it doesn't have to come, it's the same thing, I mean, it's money to operate. Whether you take it out of here, out of here, it's all, like you say, it's all in the same pot. This one takes the majority vote and, or everybody voting on it in favor and this one doesn't. Great, I understand that. But if we can balance this budget this year, not bring a bunch of taxes on us, it gives us room to move next year. And if we start a whole year earlier on events, instead of waiting a whole year, next January to, hopefully, if we don't have a bad season or have the money to do it, right now I see a way to make it work. We can balance the budget, still grow our permanent fund, and we can get new economy going that's different than fishing or traditionally what we have here now. So that, that's the whole point there. It's exactly what you're saying, trying to give us room and sight for the future. Not knowing the season, state and federal, what they're going to do. We can still implement these taxes, they're not, like I said, they're not going right. They can go on the shelf, they can come out at any time. Council can vote in favor, we need it, we need it. But right now, there's an option that gives us some wiggle room for the future.
Okay, James, just for FYI for those two on the phone, there's, I think approximately 15 or 16 total members in the audience right now, mixed between staff and, and community. So go ahead, James.
Okay, so I've got a few thoughts, but I wanted to ask Robert a question real quick because it wasn't clear on his fish tax suggestion. Were you saying essentially, Robert, that we just end the whip 1.2 million dollars on there even though it's likely not going to happen?
Why do you say not likely? I mean, it was a good year, we've got a lot of processors and.
Need to be real.
I am, I am.
We haven't had the fish tax numbers that you, you know, that we, we were used to, you know, five years ago. The, the way that the processes are handling their market share and, or wanting to guarantee their market share has got them doing things differently than they ever have before in terms of the amount of fish that leaves Prince Williamstown, amount of fish that's delivered to floating processors, the growth of processing companies that are not in Prince Williamstown, or not even grow, excuse me. And I think, you know, I think the reality is the fish tax numbers are going to be far less than, than we were accustomed to in the average of the last 10 years. So I say that not, not to be negative, but just to be realistic about the situation from, from what I see. And also, this wasn't that stellar of a senior, it was a, it was a strong average year. It wasn't anything great.
Good, Robert.
You know, James, and that was part of the, the permanent fund is just knowing the future or not knowing the future. And we can get this event started a whole year early. Next year, we don't, we don't know what we're in for. And since you've got here, you've talked about getting events going, a whole nother revenue. And we've got staff, we've got chamber, we've got, you know, I mean, I could just see, you know, if, if, if next year's bad, things ain't meeting our goal and we got to raise taxes. Like I said, we have room to raise taxes. But if we put ourselves against the wall now, state and federal come down on us and we haven't started any new economy, economic growth, where are we then? We're, we're, we dug ourselves in a hole that's even harder to get out of. And we're going to have to do some guts that we don't like. So just trying to think of a way that won't put us in a, in a bind and that will grow us for the future. If we get one event going, and that's, you're, you're talking big event. And I've talked to other people and there are smaller events that they would like to get going. So I, that's kind of why I'm, you know, I'm getting excited about it. Is it is a whole nother economy. It is a whole nother sales tax, bed tax, carbon tax that we could see grow. I mean, we might even sell more fish locally. Anyway, that's, that's my pitch.
Ken? Yeah, so I, I tend to agree with Robert on most everything he said. I don't think we're going to have as much fish tax as you think. I can agree with James there, but I do think it's going to be higher than the 800. Yeah, it didn't feel like a great senior, but that's just because there's more boats fishing. And James is right, we're sending a lot more fish through Valdez, they're kicking our butt with new plants and really nice hatchery that produces the majority of the fish we catch now. So, you know, I, I can agree with Robert those, I don't want to raise all these new taxes this year, it's just going to put a burden on our economy. Primarily the raising the tax gap is what I'm most against out of all the three ordinances that we have later in our next meeting. So, but I, I don't see why we can't, you know, reevaluate that 800 number a little bit. I understand we want to put money back into the permanent fund. That's, you know, makes a lot of sense. We pulled a lot of money out of it in the last few years. But, you know, I think we're probably going to be right around our 10-year average, probably. Maybe a little bit higher, but it's not going to be, you know, 1.5, 1.6. I think it'll be around 1.1, 1.2. So if we raise that line item, 150 or 200, then we're a lot closer. Yeah, you know, I just don't want to see us drive all this business out of town by raising new taxes. I agree with Robert, we have taxes coming from the state. Trumpy is talking about changing the tax code too. You know, we're going to have taxes on our taxes on top of more taxes. Me personally, if everything changes the way that it's proposed right now, I'm going to get hit with nine new taxes between city, state and federal. So I just, cost of living's already pretty, pretty darn high in this town and I don't want to see it go up anymore.
Good.
One more and I'll be done.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, on the phone.
Is that for me? Okay, so we, we've avoided, and we've done a good job of having any kind of new taxes for the last several years, which is how we ended up having to take two and a half, three million dollars out of the permanent. That is unsustainable level of withdrawing, considering the fact that if we don't do something for revenue, that if we do get hit with reduced reimbursement rates by the state and fed, we're going to be drawing down from the fund regardless. Because this doesn't do, this, these taxes don't get us anywhere, that's great. It just gets us to where we can kind of say, okay, for the year, maybe. But not, we can't even guarantee that because we don't know what is yet to come for our reimbursement next year. We don't even know what our fish tax is going to be. We're just, we're hoping that it's going to be north of 800 so we can pay a little bit back into the permanent fund. So we run a risk of if we don't do something, and I agree, I don't want to pay any more taxes either. Not like, you know, we don't pay them, the people that sit around the table there. We pay them too, it's, it's not fun. But we're going to be in a, we could potentially be in a worse situation if we try not to do anything and then we really happen to play catch up in the, the coming months. That's it.
That's my regard. Okay, one of the tenants we had coming into this was to use the highs and lows, the fish tax, balance stuff out. Every year that came along, we had a big bump in fish tax, we'd go spend it all. And that's basically what we're proposing doing here. We're running on a minimal budget as it is. We've got nothing in for maintenance and capital, construction projects, you know, compare a bell with the baler plant, a loader, whatever, we got $0 in for anything. We're living on borrowed time, budgeting like this. We can keep trying to meet unrealistic numbers or we can adequately fund whatever level of services we decide we want. But we need to fund it adequately. This is what we've got now. I mean, if we want to cut programs, services, whatever in the future, that's a decision we need to make as a community, but we need to fund what we've got to an appropriate level so we've got some money in there for maintenance. We've got some money in there for stuff when it wears out and breaks down and we have to replace it. So revenue's part of that whole process. I don't like taxes any more than anybody else does. But I certainly don't want to dig a worse hole for what we've got, you know, the physical buildings and machinery and stuff that we've got now and dig us a maintenance hole like we saw in the 80s. We need to take care of our stuff.
Okay, last word for Alan, we got to go to a public hearing.
Just one quick interjection here. The model that I've given you for the budget is based upon the conversations that we've been having for a long, long time about taking the bumps out of the budget philosophically. If you, if you have a buck in income and you try to spend 97 cents of that so that you have three cents left over, that goes into the kitty that you can save for one year or five years to be able to do something big and pay cash for it rather than go into debt. And that was one of the things that I talked about initially. Low debt, strong reserves and diverse income streams create a position of power in your decision-making. We have an A to a B with respect to reserves, but we're, we're in a C and D, maybe a D in the other two categories. And that's, you know, what we're trying to improve. If anything, it'd be nice to have extra money to pay down some of that debt so we don't have that long-term news hanging around our neck. And so, you know, thinking about a philosophical approach to this as well as just a strictly a numbers approach.
Okay, our time being out, we will, with no objection, we will call the work session adjourned.
And just one question for Alan. So hopefully we can talk about exemptions again. There was a couple that I wanted to touch on, we got a little sidetracked. But I didn't see a number for proceeds, proceeds of resale products. And I didn't see any like BMB hotel tax, now they have an exemption for, for stuff. And those are the types of people we want to be, be hitting is the people who are staying in the BMBs coming to our town, you know, outside sources. So just maybe next meeting we could take a look at that.
I think those numbers are elusive.
Yeah, we've got 61 more days by my count, 62 counting today. So we're, we're not done yet by, by any stretch. Okay, we'll call the work session adjourned then. And we will call the public hearing of November 1st, 2017, 6:45 PM to order. Roll call please.
Mayor Copeland is absent. James Burton?
Here.
Ken Jones?
Here.
Jeff Gard?
Here.
Robert Beadle?
Here.
Josh Halquist is absent. David Allison?
Here.
James Wees?
Here.
Forum of counsel.
Okay, our public hearing tonight is on ordinance, three ordinances actually. 1156, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, adopting chapter 5.39 motor fuel excise tax and imposing an excise tax of four cents per gallon on motor fuel dispensed into vehicles and watercraft from a fuel facility within Cordova. Ordinance 1159, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, amending Cordova municipal code section 5.40.030C and CMC 5.40.030D to increase the cap on sales tax from $3,000 to $7,500. And item number three, ordinance 1160, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, amending Cordova municipal code, chapter 5.40 to repeal CMC 5.40.090, eliminating the compensatory collection discount from sales tax. So with that, mic is open if anybody in the audience would like to give a comment. For those on the phone, there's approximately 20 individuals from both staff and the community in attendance. Anybody? Any of those three ordinance, come up. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Bill Weber, steel box 1230 in Cordova here. Got, can you hear me? Yeah. I'm here to speak today against the three ordinances you just outlined, Dave. And regarding ordinance 1156. regarding ordinance eleven fifty-six, I do not support this and recommend do not pass. Motor fuel for both vehicles and watercraft are already being taxed at a rate of six percent. Raising the overall tax on fuel purchases to ten percent would place an increased burden on users, especially those users that are highly dependent and require fuel to operate their business that is already a high expense item in their operations. This will reduce the profitability of Cordovans in business. Speaking to ordinance eleven fifty-nine, I strongly do not support this and highly recommend do not pass. As an entrepreneurial manufacturing company living in Cordova for sixty years and for the past thirty-seven years designing and building commercial equipment for use in local and statewide commercial fisheries and additionally working in an already high cost of living community, this additional tax increase would most likely curtail sales and force local individuals to shop outside of Cordova for their equipment purchases. Approving this ordinance would not bode well for established local businesses that typically sell high-ticket items. It will render a loss of revenue not only for the city of Cordova, but myself as a businessman in this community, as even more sales would incur outside the community and stifling local businesses. Presently, six percent, well, not presently, uh, six percent on seventy-five hundred dollars, it's four hundred and fifty dollars tax that would be collected. Currently, it's six percent on three thousand, a hundred and eighty dollars is being collected. It's a difference of two hundred and seventy dollars. When someone looks at a four hundred and fifty dollar sales tax on a large ticket quote or purchase in Cordova, that business will most likely be taken out of Cordova and the losers are the local businesses in the community that, in the community of Cordova, further eroding the local economy. Speaking to ordinance eleven sixty, I struggle somewhat with supporting this ordinance change as it provides for local businesses that pay their sales tax in a timely manner, a bit of relief of liability and contributes to their bottom line. However, the sales tax code presently being set at six percent has been in place for quite some time and businesses are accustomed to this. If there is to be a bit of give and take to be extended, this is one ordinance I think I can stand behind because as a, because I, as a local business, have already collected and set aside the six percent sales tax for the city. I would simply then make the payment in full amount for the six percent collected. That's all I have. Thank you, Bill.
Bill, just for clarification, that's not a, a four percent sales tax, it's a four cents per gallon.
So you've been looking at about a one point two percent?
Increase.
Okay.
Just, just for clarification.
Okay, thanks. I misread that. So where, let's see, what is, four cents per gallon, okay. That's quite a bit different.
Yeah, but also there's no cap on that. The four cents on any gallon.
Yeah, there's no cap on the four cents. Correct, regardless.
Any?
Anybody else on any of the three ordinances, any or all of the three ordinances? Seeing nobody running up to the mic, uh, but, oh, sorry.
Sorry, Barb Jewell, two point two mile white shed road. I sometimes hesitate to speak to these issues because like many of us, I wear more than one hat in the community and I don't want people to confuse the two. So I want to be clear that I'm speaking as an individual, um, community member, property owner, business owner. I'm not sure that I know enough about this to say yes, do this, or no, don't do that. But what I can tell you is that as an individual property owner and business person paying sales tax in the community, I value the services that I receive. I value the roadwork, I value the law enforcement, I value the education system for my children. Um, I value living in a safe and sustainable community. I heard at the last meeting that I attended, um, Councilman Burton and Councilman Wees phrasing this as aiming for self-sustainability so that we're not in such a position to rely on others, to support our way of life and the way of life that my family moved here to enjoy and that we stay here to enjoy. Um, as an individual property owner, it's important to me to see some of that burden for those community services spread widely across all of the people who come to enjoy the things that Cordova has to offer. A lot of people are here for only a small period of the year. They're not necessarily paying property taxes. Um, they're not paying sales taxes because they bring in their goods. Um, and so many of the proposals that I've seen now under consideration are only going or are going to hit hardest the people who are here year round. So again, as a community that wants to build our base and be self-sustaining, I encourage us to look at spreading the cost of living here as widely as possible. So I appreciate all of the consideration you've taken to look at ways to keep the quality of life in our community, um, and I appreciate it very much. And again, I hope that you look at a broad application of revenue streams, um, and revenue generation.
Thank you, Burton.
Last chance, last call. You'll get another chance in the, during the regular meeting. Gary, seeing, seeing no other, uh, members coming up to speak, we'll, uh, call the public hearing adjourned and, uh, take about a three minute recess to, uh, start the council meeting. November first, twenty seventeen, at seven PM to order. If you can, join me with pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Mayor Copeland is absent. James Burton?
Here.
Ken Jones?
Here.
Jeff Gard?
Here.
Robert Beadle?
Here.
Josh Halquist is absent. David Allison?
Here.
James Wees?
Here.
Quorum of council.
If we go to the regular agenda. Motion to approve.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Move and second to approve the regular agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Any conflicts of interest? Hearing none. Communications, bio petitions for visitors. I don't have any guest speakers on the list. Uh, audience comments regarding agenda items, uh, mic is open.
I was a guest speaker.
Oh, come on up, Melina.
Sorry. That's okay.
They didn't inform.
No problem. I'm here as always, every year for the sobriety celebration and I just have a couple highlights. I hope that you all can come. I want to thank you on behalf of the native village of Iac for the twenty-fourth annual proclamation for this year's sobriety celebration as well as the donation. So I'm going to give you a couple of, um, highlights. Uh, the logo winner this year, uh, was Brittany Banks or Brittany McDaniel's and the design is what I'm wearing.
Okay.
Um, the theme is writing the, and the way you pronounce wave is gillic is what I was told, the wave of sobriety. That is our logo, uh, or our theme and the person that, um, submitted that was the winner, but they wish to be anonymous. So we don't know who it is. I do, but nobody else. Our keynote speaker this year, um, is a local person. Many of you may know him, Bob Bernard, and he will be our keynote speaker. We're very excited about him coming and he is very excited to come as well as his wife. So we're excited that we have a local person. We haven't had one as a keynote speaker for a couple years or so. Um, one of the other exciting things is that, um, Lisa Murkowski, Murkowski's, um, aide, Deborah Voe will be here, um, doing a video, uh, that Lisa Murkowski, um, has put to be viewed on Friday, the tenth, and we've never had that. And she's going to welcome everybody. So that to us is very exciting. Also, um, I'm going to put my glasses on. Uh, we also, uh, have Congressman Don Young's special assistant Tara Reeseinger and she will, uh, be, uh, talking about sobriety on Saturday. Uh, we also have Representative Louise Stutes, Representative Dean Westlake. Uh, we have Carol Cousins, uh, she is from the Copper Center area and she lost her daughter about a year ago to a heroin overdose and she's going to speak about that since, you know, as everybody knows in the nation and in Alaska, we have a lot of problems with that. So she's going to share her story. So that's one of the speakers that we'll have that will be different. And we will also have, um, of dance groups, uh, we will have, uh, in the schools, the Ki Kwan dancers from Cake. They will be in the high school on Friday and, uh, and the grade school. We will also have the, um, schedule on our website here shortly as well as in the paper next week. So, uh, we're hoping that everybody comes. We will also have the veteran ceremony and, uh, unfortunately, um, the person that was going to help with that, Clyde Torgeson, um, is going to be out of town, but Wendy Rainey's going to help and also, um, Valerie Simon, that is a veteran that, uh, will be coming to Cordova. After that, we will also have, um, a square dance. Uh, Belle is going to have a square dance for youth and family on Saturday from eight to eleven thirty at Pioneer. The, uh, dance groups that are coming, oh, I forgot, we're also having the veteran ceremony as I said. Dance groups that are coming is the Ki Kwan from Cake, Yi Koo from Juneau, the Mount Saint Elias from Yakatah, the Kodiak Alutik dancers from Kodiak and our own dance group. So that is just some of the, uh, things that are going at sobriety. We hope that you all come and it's just nice to be here again. So any questions?
Answer.
Okay, well, um, good luck tonight and you're all awesome, okay? Take care. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And, uh, please stick around for just a few minutes. We do have your proclamation here in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, any audience comments on agenda items?
Pete Hefner, Court of a School Board, uh, and so let me know if I'm, uh, if it is, this isn't related, I'm addressing this, uh, as the decisions you're making on the ordinance before you, uh, determining how you're going to raise revenue. Um, I just want to make sure that everyone realizes that, you know, within this whole budgets that, that's been proposed, um, education has still been cut four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so, um, first of all, thank you very much for running for the city council. I truly appreciate, um, what you guys have done to yourselves. Um, it is in a pleasant situation, unfortunately. Um, the Court of a School District has been cut last year by twenty-six percent of the city funding. Um, that's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, it's quite a, 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 a large chunk of the budget. Um, the big picture education funding has increased, so just sort of an overall picture is education funding has only been increased ten percent in the last ten years. So right off the bat, we don't have adequate funding for education, just even to start with, without even cuts. Um, you know, as we all know, inflation has gone way up more than, by more than ten percent in ten years. Health insurance has gone up two hundred and sixty-five percent. And so this reduction of some percent will take us back to about a two thousand and three level. Um, and one thing I kind of wondered, does everybody in Cordova realize that education has been cut? Um, and it doesn't make me proud when folks realize that Cordova is leading by cutting education funding. Schools should not suffer this fiscal cut for yet a second year in a row, nor should it be funded for three years at this reduced level. This fiscal crisis will pass, but education and the children will be harmed in this process. And so just one other thing, I, I know the bu- the school budget isn't in the agenda at this point in time. It, will it be brought up at another meeting?
It's part of the budget. It would be when the budget is approved.
Okay. And then that was what I was wondering, if I should continue on with my testimony at this point or if I should come back at a further meeting?
If it's budget related, go ahead.
Yeah, it's all about education funding. Um, and so it, it's sad to see that the cuts that are coming and that are being made come to the harm to the children in the communities of Cordova. Cuts to education, what does this fiscal crisis cost the children the most? And so one of the biggest questions that came to my mind when I heard about this cut initially is why was education funding cut? What was the reasoning behind it? Did the citizens of Cordova say the classes are too small? I, I just didn't understand the reasoning initially for even for cutting education. I'm very, you have to excuse me, I'm very passionate about education funding and I think the kids of Cordova deserve the best. It would be nice to see that the, the thought process in reducing education funding and why education cuts were made at such an extraordinary level of twenty-six percent. Schools cannot raise any revenue, I've mentioned that before. Other departments can raise revenues. The state is in deficit spending for three years now. Has education funding been cut from the state? Not yet. The state realizes the importance of education. Does our city value the, uh, education? Are we waiting for people to tell you that education is important? Last year, when you, uh, brought up it, the cut to education funding, we saw four families came to the meeting and said they had specifically moved to Cordova so that children could attend school here because it is a grade school. Our parent, your parents teach at school, your children attend classes, your neighbors have kids in school. Uh, do you want to see less opportunities for the children of Cordova? And then other issue is what happens when we get to the legislative session and find that the state is going to reduce education? They've tried for the last three years. This is a distinct possibility this year that will just double down on the Cordova budget is doing to education in Cordova. We all have months to hear how that will turn out. We all pay increasing taxes and I don't want to bring up secure rural schools funding either, that's happened in the past, but in the past, we received eight to ten million dollars, lessening the burden on the cities, uh, by ten million dollars over the last ten years. So now is the time for the city council to make hard choices. What organization has brought in more than half of the required funding over the last ten years, saving the city ten million dollars? And why are schools now facing a second year of, uh, education funding cuts of four hundred and fifty? Ultimately, the city could cut all funding to schools. The school would still open, just at a reduced functioning level. The question to the city council is what level of education do you want to see for the children of Cordova? Right now, we're in a track of lowered educational priorities, lessening the opportunities that children have last year or possibly even the last eight to ten years with these proposed cuts. Does the community really want to see education diminished and degraded by the lack of funding? And that's keeping in mind that education has only increased ten percent over the last ten years. I believe education is valued in this community. So edu- so anyway, uh, don't take the fiscal crisis out on the children of Cordova. As I've told the legislatures for many years now, don't balance the budget on the backs of our children. Education of Cordova's children is in your hands. How you will handle this will affect the educational outcomes of students here in Cordova. And thanks again for these tough decisions that you're facing. Thanks much for letting me.
Thank you, Pete. Anybody else? Only once? Only twice? Doesn't look like any other takers. Okay, chairpersons of representatives, boards and commissions, CCMC? Okay, chairpersons of representatives, boards, and commissions, CCMC?
Hello, and hi to the Jameses on the phone and everybody here. This is Kristen Carpenter from the Health Authority Board for the Cordova Community Medical Center, and I was just gonna give a quick update on some of the things we've been talking about and following. We're gonna talk about it a little bit later, but I think people have been hearing that the pharmacy is projected to open on November 15th, the 340B retail pharmacy. We have the state surveyors here in town right now looking at the long-term care facility, so they are supposed to wrap up their visit tomorrow afternoon, I think. So it's too soon to know, you know, to be able to say exactly what we're gonna hear from them. We've completed an audit for fiscal year 2016, and we're gonna get a presentation tomorrow night from the auditors on that. And I was gonna mention, too, the budget, or I should say, where we are year-to-date. So we had projected in our budget to have a loss of a quarter million dollars this time at this point in the year, and we actually, so far, have net income of $560,000. And that's due, in large part, to increased use of swing beds, and also to decreases, pretty significant decreases, in the professional services line item, because the administrator has been working really hard to get as many local hires as possible. So I think we're almost, I think we're down to, I want to say, two or three traveling nurses. So that's pretty great. And then, we've also been contracting with a different firm for working on our accounts receivable, and, you know, the accounts receivable amounts are aged, zero to 30 days, 31 to 60, 60 to 90, 92, 120, and 120-plus. And the numbers have slowly been shifting, so that the percentage in zero to 30 is higher, and those other older accounts, the percentages of those, as a total of accounts receivable is slowly going down. So I think that's good news for being able to increase our collections rate. And then, last thing, I was just gonna mention, this doesn't affect, it's not CCMC business proper, but just an open enrollment period started today for people looking to get individual or reduced-rate coverage on the healthcare exchange on healthcare.gov, and that goes until December 15th. And I believe that Ilanka has some funding to help people enroll with that and to do outreach, and so if you hear of anybody asking any questions, that should be, the Ilanka Health Center should be a source of information for helping to get people enrolled. And that's it. Questions? Talk later.
Just, it's nice to have a good news.
Yeah. Well, that's due to Scott.
Okay, school board?
So I think a few items of interest that you haven't heard about already. The School Board to the Republic reports are on our website. That's the data that the state asks us to collect and report out on. It gives you an indication of how the school is doing. It's not everything, but it's a snapshot of our performance. As well, the new PEAKS assessment tests are online, those results. This is a baseline year, because it's a brand-new test from the state. I was pleased and even got an email from John Bitney, our lobbyist, saying that Cordova looks really good within the state, especially among the smaller districts, so we were pretty pleased about that. We are having a lot of increased facility use. Buildings are being used morning, noon, and night, lots of traffic, which is good for everybody, I think. And of course, we wanted to let you know that there are two teams in town, our varsity volleyball and junior high basketball are playing this weekend. Oh, one last thing, student-teacher conferences are this week, and it's not too late to sign up. They'll be, they'll be meeting with people tomorrow night, and then Friday, oh, no, I think it's tomorrow night only, not Friday. And tonight. It's a little late to sign up for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. I think Robert wants to give a harbor commission report, maybe?
Yes, we just had a special meeting last night and passed a resolution for the harbor commission. I'll just read it easier, try to paraphrase it. A resolution of the harbor commission to the City of Cordova, Alaska, to the Cordova City Council requesting allocation of 200,000 from the harbor reserve fund for the building of used oil processing warehouse. So that was taken care of last night, and we should be seeing it on the next agenda, next council meeting. Got that down.
Okay, thanks, Robert. Don't see a student council rep here yet. I know they're just getting organized with their new group, so. That brings us to the consent calendar. Council, the consent calendar is before you.
I want to pull that.
Yeah, I've got the, yeah, once it's approved here, we'll, I'll read it. Okay, go ahead, call the roll.
Robert Beadle?
Yes.
Josh Halquistus Alson? James Wheeze?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
David Allison?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
James Burton?
Yes.
Group?
Okay, if you could indulge me for a minute, council, I have the proclamation for the Native Village of Eac sobriety celebration here. Belen could accept on behalf of the troops there if you...
Can I say something on the proclamation?
Sure.
In behalf of the village, I'd like to thank the City of Cordova. You guys have always come forward in giving us this proclamation, so it means a lot to us, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'll read it here. City of Cordova, Alaska proclamation, a proclamation by the mayor of Cordova, Alaska, recognizing the 24th Annual Sobriety Celebration and Memorial Potlatch sponsored by the Native Village of Eac. Whereas alcoholism and drug abuse are serious health and social concerns that affect and impact family members as well as entire communities, and whereas the Native Village of Eac promotes sobriety through social gatherings and education, and whereas the sobriety celebration's mission each year is to bring awareness of alcoholism and drug abuse to the community and to celebrate through cultural healing for those suffering from dependency, and whereas the Native Village of Eac's 24th Annual Sobriety Celebration and Memorial Potlatch, the theme of which is Riding the Keelik Wave of Sobriety, and will be held in Cordova from November 10th through November 12th, 2017, and whereas the Native Village of Eac invites everyone to celebrate the progress that their culture has made in promoting and achieving sobriety through good food, arts and crafts fair, educational workshops, inspirational speakers, the honoring of our elders, youth, and veterans, a sobriety countdown, Alaskan native dances, and 12-step meetings. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Clay Copeland, on behalf of the city council and the community of Cordova, Alaska, to hereby proclaim the 24th Annual Sobriety Celebration and Memorial Potlatch to be an inspiration of community commitment to aid and educate Cordovans and others about the abuse and misuse of alcohol and drugs through the social events held during the celebration. Signed this 25th day of October, 2017. Clay, Mayor. Okay, moving on, we don't have any minutes, doesn't look like. No bids. Reports of officers. The mayor's report, it's in your packet. Manager's report.
Just wanted to make you aware of a couple of things. I provided you the handout on the marijuana approval process. We'll try to get that up on our website here coming up, too, so everybody can see it. And I wanted to make you aware that we received an EPA Region 10 Waters Award for our LT2 project as one of the 10 recognized projects in the country. So kudos to Rich Rogers and the staff that worked on that, and Joel and Water. We have a little piece here that said, I'll just read it real quickly. The City of Cordova's unique geography and high demand for water used in fish processing requires a public drinking water system to rely on forced service water sources treated in three water treatment plants. For many years, three of the water sources, Murchison Falls, Ian Creek Dam, Mills Reservoir, and Orca Catchment, were unfiltered. Water from the backup source, Eac Clay, has been filtered and chlorinated at the 3.5 million gallon treatment plant. This project enabled Cordova's drinking water treatment and distribution system to meet long-term to surface water treatment rule compliance requirements with the installation of UV disinfection at those particular facilities. The project was made more affordable by the 1.5% interest rate, as well as 1.9 million of principal forgiveness. So that's really an outstanding project for us. And then, Councilman Beadle asked about, you know, some of the partnerships we were working on. I just want to highlight a couple of those real quickly for us. We're working with the watershed project on recycling efforts. We've had a couple of meetings in that regard, and kind of moving forward with the plan for 2018, and some, might have some questions about a variety of issues for council coming up here after the first of the year. Working on the Science Center on Relocation Possibilities, putting together a plan for that, and more of a, I think, of a campus idea regarding that. We're working at the school district on a variety of structural and facility issues. CCMC, we're working on sharing of positions, the power supply, and a variety of other issues. The Native Village, we're taking back or taking over the Enerfries Collection. We're working on security cameras. We're working with them on the Department of Corrections on a diversion program. Coast Guard, water, wastewater, and putting new camels on the T-Dock. Department of Corrections, we're working with them in a diversion program in conjunction with NVE, and basically Senate Bill 91, what it does is we're, you know, we're appropriate ankle monitoring instead of incarceration, helps keep our costs down. And we received, the commissioner was here this morning, actually, regarding that particular issue. We received additional funding in Cordova from the cutbacks we previously experienced. It was about $15,000, and then the Native Village has forwarded some money for us to coordinate that project. So those are just, those are a variety of things that we're working on in terms of partnerships and helping everybody keep their costs down. So I think those are good things, and glad to be back from vacation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for the manager? Robert?
I probably should ask Kristen, but the UPS for the hospital?
Yep. We should be going out to bid on that very soon. That project was, if I characterize it correctly, was significantly more complicated than first anticipated. And, but we have, we've had, Weston's been involved in that with the hospital staff, and I think we've come to a plan now, and we should be pretty close. I think Weston told me this morning that we should have the documents, the engineering documents available on Monday, and then it'll go out to bid. So we're getting pretty close on it. It's a multi-stage system. It's not as simple as just flipping the switch on the battery. There's a coordination of a number of systems within the hospital. There's not only the UPS system, but there's two step-up or step-down transformers that have to go with it, and all that has to be engineered. And after conversing with the hospital, I think there was a desire to have some additional systems within the hospital connected to that for the future, so it really became a lot more complicated. You know, we hope the cost is consistent with what we predicted, but given the additional engineering, we'll see where that goes. But we'll get her done.
Further questions for the manager? Anybody on the phone, questions for the manager?
None.
Okay, hearing none, we'll move along to correspondence, or city clerk's report. Clerk, you have anything?
Just wanted to remind everybody about the special election coming up Tuesday, November 7th, and if you can't be here on the 7th, we do have absentee in-person going on right now through the 6th at City Hall. And Susan should be back tomorrow.
Okay, correspondence, and we have a letter from the Fishers, seeking against the variable tax proposal. Bringing us up to ordinances and resolutions. First on the agenda is ordinance 1156, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Cordova, Alaska adopting Chapter 5.39 Motor Fuel Excise Tax and imposing an excise tax of four cents per gallon on motor fuel dispensed into vehicles and watercraft from a fuel facility within Cordova. Second reading.
I'm gonna move away from the motion.
Been moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded to adopt the motion. Discussion.
This is really the only thing we've got out there in the three ordinance, proposed ordinances that we've got that collect any meaningful amount of money to offset budgetary shortfalls for this year's proposed budget, so. We're in a hole. This is our big shot at it. I think it goes towards spreading costs out over seasonal folks that come to Cordova and use services here in the summer with the fishing community. I think it's a good idea.
Second of the motion, James, you want to speak?
Well, any comments I've made before, you know, Mr. Rudson thought up a really good point in his, in his audience comments in the beginning, which is, you know, we've had a cut in school funding, which is probably the last base that any of us really want to cut, and it's something that I know you, Mr. Allen, myself, both, that we'd like to infuse some money back into, but where we are with our budget right now, there's not
Like, we lost one of the Jameses, at least, I think.
I think you lost them.
We're having technical difficulties.
Anybody else want to speak? You're back, James?
Sorry about that.
No worries. Go ahead.
Okay, so anyway, you know, if we were to, if we were trying to fully fund the school right now, which I know we would all like to, we'd be looking at an $800,000 deficit right now. We're actually a little bit more than the end of. And we're just, we're not even getting close to where we need to be, and we've already cut, and we've been over this so many times. We can't cut that much more out of our budget. We've already done so much. And like Mr. Lanning said, you know, we've, a lot of what we're doing is our debt purpose for projects in Cordova, whether it's roads, water systems, or school rebuild, you know, beautiful schools. And I'd like to see us get in a place where we're just a little bit more financially healthy. It's, you know, we're just kind of running out of options, but this is, this is part of our tools, and I'm gonna support it again.
Hey, thank you, James. Anybody else? Robert?
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I mean, I gave my reasons earlier in the workshop. I think we're just, if we keep doing the same thing, we're gonna end up at the same spot. Our representative, she's, she's been pushing for a fuel tax also, you know, like, I think it was eight cents on the road and 12 cents on the water. So... So we'd be looking at a 16 cents on the water. So, and then there again, I think unless we develop new business, new economy, we're just, we're going to be stuck with taxes and we ain't going to be able to raise them anymore and we ain't going to have no way to go. And the money we spent out of the permanent fund last year for the schools is, it was for the bond. We put it in there for that reason, because we had a bad year. And if we have another bad year, we're going to be spending it. But what are we going to raise taxes again? I've gave an option. I think these can sit on the shelf for a little bit, see what the state and the feds are going to do, and it'll give us room. And if we start working on the events, we have a whole different revenue stream to, like Mr. Gard said, you know, maintenance, funding for others. Things are coming along. The hospital might not need so much funding next year. You know, we might not be in such a hole there. So, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done there too, just as important. So I'm not going to support it. I think there is other options and could set us in a better position for the future.
Others? Ken?
Yeah, I've been pretty outspoken about my opposition to this, this ordinance and the other tax ordinances from the get-go. I won't be supporting it. I, I think that there's other options we have to balance our budget, like Mr. Beetle has stated. And though I wouldn't support this over raising the cap, I cannot support it while we still have two other ordinances to come. So I'll be voting no. Just don't want to see the cost of living increase any further than it already has to in our community. Thank you.
Hey, James Weiss, want to speak? Do or against?
Yeah, I will, Dave. I, well, I don't really like the idea of doing this. I think it's, it's something that I'm going to support. I, I think our, I think we've kind of crippled our budgets and even, even, you know, expanding with the new position or, or, you know, as far as an events coordinator or someone who can be put through the tax enforcement, which I hope, I hope that's something we can do through retraining, part of a nutrition process or something. That way we can, you know, keep a local employee. Anyway, I spoke to that at the session. It, we're, we're going to be short money either way and, and this is, this is something I, I see me being able to afford. I know I'm not a commercial fishing vessel owner or anything like that and there's, there's people buying a lot more fuel than I am. But, but I think we're going to be hurting for money and while I, while I don't like to do it, we're, it's kind of where we are too. I think I'll be voting yes for this.
Okay, thank you, James. I'll take my first round at this point in time, I guess. I do support this ordinance for the main reason is that it, it does allow us to collect some more revenues from those that, most of the revenue from this will be collected seasonally in the summertime. Although everybody has to pay it, those that are paying local property taxes will have to pay it as well as those people that aren't paying property taxes. But it does spread it out at least a little bit. I recognize that the state and, and others are, are looking at, at this motor fuel tax as a, as a way to, to make revenues as well. Anchorage recently proposed 10 cent motor fuel tax, which they will be looking at at their council here shortly. So it, so it is, is one of those things. But, but for Cordova, I think it's one of the ways that we can spread the, spread the burden out more evenly. So I will be supporting this particular ordinance. So anybody want to do a round two?
Yeah, Ken?
Yes, I have a comment for round two.
Okay, Ken Jones first and then you.
Oh, I'll eat my time to burden.
Okay, go ahead, Burton.
Okay, maybe those will help because a couple of times now I've heard Mr. Jones or Beetle say that we've got other options. I'm waiting to hear them. I'm waiting to hear what else we can do. I'm waiting to hear where there is in the city budget that we can cut more from. And so far I haven't heard it, I just keep hearing the rest, yeah, we can cut more, we can cut more, but I don't, I don't see where we can. I would love to be enlightened and, and see how we can meet our services that we want to provide for the city of Cordova and those of citizens that are important and balance our budget in a responsible manner in, in some other fashion. I'm waiting to hear it. I haven't heard it yet.
Okay, Councilmember Jones?
The other options I was referring to are what Alan was saying in our, our workshop. You know, we can do a little more with enforcement to increase revenues. What Mr. Beetle was saying in our workshop, we are under budgeting our fish tax a little bit. We can disagree on the amount of what it'll be, but I think 800 is a conservative number. And we did have $720,000 in earnings alone in the permanent fund this year. Previous councils have been more than willing to take out over a million dollars a year from the permanent fund to balance our budget. And I feel like we can avoid new taxes by taking a modest increase in the fishing line item, a modest permanent fund transfer and being patient, like it says up here on the board, and allowing the 2020 plan to work itself out through the already proposed staffing reductions through attrition that are in the plan. That's the other option that I refer to.
Round two, go ahead. Mr. Gard?
Yeah, the, the patience isn't just to wait for staff attrition. Part of it is figuring out where the appropriate staffing up is. We may be there, we may not. We may be able to cut five positions, we may be able to do whatever, but we don't know where that is yet. As long as we sit here and do nothing for revenues, we're not keeping up on maintenance, we're not doing any of this stuff. Our budgetary picture from other revenue sources, i.e. the state and the feds, is only going to keep getting worse. And if we keep borrowing from our permanent fund to make a basic operating budget, it's, we're not doing a good job running the city's finances doing that. We either cut services and say, this goes away, and fund what we have adequately if what we've got costs too much, or we adequately fund what we've got going. But this hard and back and hard and back and hard and back only dukes us a hole that will be harder to get out of later. When we're looking at a $10 million operation and two and a half million of it is debt service every year, you know, buying our way out of debt service is a big deal. And doing that by stacking up dollars so we can pay for these projects ourselves instead of skimming the cream off every year is a much better long-term plan financially for us than just trying to keep stuff artificially low right now. It costs what it's going to cost to run whatever we want for services. We just need to figure out what we want for services. But I'm not at all in favor of cutting just to make a number.
Councilmember Beetle?
I think you're misjudging the, the cutting part is what we're trying to do is go status quo this year and patience and giving it, we're talking a 2020 plan here. We're, we're going from business as usual four to a strategic plan and having a plan moving forward. We're, we're jumping in and cutting the raw fish tax down way low and stuff. We want to do this. We want to get more revenue to do our maintenance and that's where we have a big year. More money goes to maintenance, new loaders. I've sat in council where, okay, so we don't want to cut anymore. I'd love to fund the hospital. I'd love to fund the police station. I'd love to fund the P.E.T. and the school. But until we do something different, and that's, Ken said it great, and if we get this event coordinator happening, we're starting to see other revenue. So that your concerns are my concerns, is until we get, until we get some more revenue coming in here, yes, it's going to be that bumpy road. We're not going to fund our maintenance that we need to. And I think, guys, we're all just looking in at Cordova. You know, all these taxes and stuff, we're, we're in a bubble here. We're saying this is what's going to happen to us and this is what we got to do to make this. But we've got outside elements working on us. We got the state and feds doing their own trick. And it's going to come back and we know we're going to have other taxes from there. So if we could, patience, we can get through 2018, working on 2019 budget. The, the state can't go through what they've been going through. Those guys are going to have to worry about reelection and pass something. They're going to, they're going to go...
Yeah.
Okay, maybe a little optimistic, but you know, I just don't see, I don't want to paint us into a corner and then, then we're going to be hitting heavy into permanent fund, anything we can. We're going to have to be raising taxes and we've already raised them. It's, it's not going to be pretty next year. So what I suggest, like Mr. Jones clarified there, is go with that process, get, allow this event coordinator to happen, get things moving where we have other revenue coming in. We talk about financial securities we can operate from us. If we, if we do this, if we go into this plan, we're going to wait a whole nother year before we do anything for any other revenue. And then we're at the mercy of the fishing season for raw fish tax, mercy of the state what they decide. I think this gives us the most flexibility and forward for independent, so we're not so concerned with what the state and the feds are going to do. If we have our own economy, we used to have our own economy here. We were twelve years out of, twelve months out of the year. This, we could start getting back that way and I think, but, no, no, don't put us in a spot so that next year, I'm, you know, we're going to raise it again. So that's, yeah, we have options and looking into the future.
Manager Lanning?
Well, I would remind you that if you look at page 32 of your budget, where we describe the taxes, our historic average on sales tax has been 3.1 million. I, I already acquiesced upon that to raise it by 200,000 as the starting point. So in order to, if we want to go higher with the fish tax, then I think we have to cut back on the sales tax to our historic average. So it's a wash for a couple hundred thousand dollars. So you're no better off than you were. The delicacy here is to overestimate everything that we're going to collect and that's how you get yourself in the most trouble. And so from the very get-go, what we've tried to do is be very conservative. I'm hopeful that this year, based upon what we've done and we can't see those results right now, I'm hopeful that this year we will eke out a very, very small surplus in our budget to add to our, our central treasury fund. I don't know what that number looks like, but it, but I expect it to be very small. What we've done is, you know, through, through cost savings and personnel issues, you know, we just had another police officer resign. So we're down again on police officers and there's two arguments, you know, we're the safest community in Alaska and we don't need that many officers. But the other argument is the reason we're the safest community in Alaska is because we have those officers and that's up for you to decide. I'd like it, I'd like, also make it clear that, you know, this is, this is not the manager's tax plan. I think I saw somebody say that. This is the result of our discussions going forward where I was asked to proceed. I can, I'll do anything you want to do, but I think it's responsible for us to, I think the indication has been to spread it around. You know, our options right now are if we have something catastrophic happen with a building or anything, we're obviously going to have to go to the permanent fund. But it sure would be nice to have some extra money in the general fund to meet those needs without having to go to the permanent fund without increasing the burden. Patience is, it comes in two areas. Patience in terms of our staffing issues to reach that nexus we've talked about. But I think the greater patience is for us to be able to wait until any measures that we take in terms of economic development come to fruition. I go to the chamber meetings every week and, you know, Kathy, full-time director over there, working really hard to improve some of our events. This is part of the risk that I've talked about in terms of, of events. In this particular budget, particularly if we make the swap on sales tax and fish tax, we don't have money to do an events coordinator. We just simply don't. And what we're going to have to try to do right now is we're going to have to try to do the taxing for enforcement in-house. And I've been talking with staff about doing events and promotions in-house if we can. And if we're going to give that a go, there's going to be a lot of time dedicated to that, but we might not even see any fruit from that until 19. So it's going to be a long time and that's the patience that we have to have. We have to have the patience to keep ourselves healthy and strong moving forward until we get there. And there is risk involved. May not come to fruition. We may not get any of those big events, but we're going to work hard to try to get us there. But I guess the point of all that is I have to have something to work with. I can't do it with nothing. And as, as I said earlier, if, if we're headed in the wrong direction from a staffing standpoint and an expertise standpoint, then there's going to be less of us to do everything. You know, right now it's kind of, you walk in, there's an expectation that you're going to talk to somebody right there. But if you have to make an appointment and it might not be till the afternoon of the next day, I guess that's a service delivery level that, that you all have to be comfortable with because I, I don't think that's a good model.
Anybody have anything new to add on this particular ordinance? Councilmember Gard?
One last comment in response to what Robert was saying. You keep talking about not painting this into a corner with taxes and I see it as being painted into a corner by lack of revenue. We're chucking all the dollars out of extraneous accounts, whether it's the general fund account completing it, whether it's pulling money out of the permanent fund, whether it's just earnings out of the permanent fund, whatever. We're not paying our own way. We're robbing Peter to pay Paul. That's how we end up with two and a half million dollars a year in debt service.
Councilmember Beetle, last chance.
Debt service, the community voted a bond for the high school, or the grade school. This building we're sitting in wasn't going to cost us a dime. We ended up with a $3 million bond. We wanted to do a, oh, down there, debt, that's debt service.
I understand.
So I'm not sure where you're coming from on that. I'm trying not to put us in a spot where we don't have any wiggle room next year. I've said it and said it that we don't know what the states and the feds are going to do to us and the city... And the city, the community members can only absorb so much taxes. Taxes are aggressive. They don't promote business. They stifle business. There was a big speech by President Kennedy on that. So I think there is options right now and it gives us time for the future. And just what you said, Mr. Lanning, is if we don't do nothing here, it's not till two thousand nineteen, or it's two thousand nineteen before we might even see some from an event thing. But if we don't start until two thousand nineteen, we're not going to see nothing until two thousand twenty. So my whole thing is, we're not taking all this money out. There's still going to be over a million dollars going back into the permanent fund. Money's still going in the revenue, the general fund. And we can get started on other economy to help pay for things. But if we wait a whole nother year, it's another year of spending.
I'm not adverse to the, starting this year with the, I'm not adverse to this year starting on an event coordinator or an event developer or whatever we want to call it. I'm all in favor of promoting growth, economic growth here in Cordova. But we got to have the revenues to do it. We talk about, you know, taxes as if taxes are just taxes for their own sake. They're not taxes for their own sake. They're for the cost of services that we have. So if we're going to have these services, we have to fund them.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, anybody have anything new to add? Last chance, Mr. Jones.
So I keep hearing this event coordinator being thrown around and it's not really for this ordinance. But as far as the budget goes, isn't that what the chamber's for?
Well, in my, in my mind, the chamber traditionally represents, you know, the business interests in your community that already exist. And while that rule varies from city to city, I think the emphasis right now is that part of it as well as, the chamber here is sort of the one-stop shop for all the things that go on, including planning and putting on the current events. In my mind, what we're seeking here is an entirely, well, an expanded area of expertise that I, I, I couldn't say at this particular point without doing a, you know, and obviously in a recruitment, that, that the person that I'm in particularly looking for might exist here, but I don't know that. There, there's a certain set of skills that have to be in place. And I'm still working on, for example, a job description. I've got Cindy working on job descriptions. She's doing research into what these positions might look like. But having lived and worked in, you know, several resort communities, I, I, I think I know what that person looks like. But, you know, that money's not in here either. That money doesn't exist in this particular budget. So, you know, again, this is bare bones, still being short. If we were going to look at the events coordinator promotion, I don't know. I don't even know what that number is. I've got a number in my head. I'm thinking the total cost with salary and benefits because you don't want to chintz on that job, that position if you're going to hire it. You might, you might spend a hundred and fifty thousand total on that contract for a year. You might spend a hundred thousand on that contract. I don't know where that number is. So if you take that and you throw in a new CBA contract and stuff, you know, we're still a long ways off from, you know, we could be five hundred thousand, five hundred and fifty thousand short in the budget. But as a compromise, I'm trying to get there at three fifty-four and make everything work. Do my best to try to figure out if we can do this in-house on both respects. So, you know, and I just, all I can, all I can promise you at this point with the budget that's on the paper is, is that we'll work as hard as we can to make everything work. That's all I can promise you right now. But I, but I think that has, I think that has weight because given the opportunity, I think the people who work here will, will rise to the challenge and, and we'll see some results. I think we're already seeing results because I think our, you know, the sport fishing and the things that are, that are happening here. Our sales taxes remain very, very good. I think we're down just a hair in the third quarter of this year. But it's remaining pretty steady.
Okay, getting back to the ordinance then, my last comment would just be that, well, this is more palatable for me than the, than the next ordinance we're going to review. I'm still not convinced. Although, I guess a compromise would be if we go with the four cents per gallon. And, you know, that gets us halfway there to our three sixty number. You know, maybe council, the other council members would consider not moving forward on the next ordinance and, you know, balancing the budget using a, a raise in the fish tax line item, which we'd still be under our tenure average and we'd still be saving for the future. We would just be saving a little bit less, well, putting less strings on the economy.
James, James, any final comment before we vote? Hearing none, then will the, call the roll, please, on eleven fifty-six.
Ken Jones?
No.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
James Wees?
Yes.
Robert Beadle?
No.
James Burton?
Yes.
Josh Halquist is absent. David Allison?
Yes.
Motion passes four-two.
Okay, moving on to ordinance eleven fifty-nine. An ordinance of the city councils, the city of Cordova, Alaska, amending Cordova municipal code section five point four zero point zero three zero C and C M C five point four zero point zero three zero D to increase the cap on sales tax from three thousand to seventy-five hundred on second reading. Need a motion to approve? Moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve ordinance eleven fifty-nine. Councilmember Gard?
I have more trouble with this one. But we're down to where we don't have a lot of options to make our budgets without living on borrowed dollars or sunshine. I mean, one of the agreements, there are a number of agreements we came to early on in the budgetary process. A, we wanted to find a way to spread the costs of operating Cordova through all the people that are using it, whether they're year-round citizens or not. That, we're trying to address with the seasonal sales tax adjustment. That idea may not have been as good as we first thought it was due to complications for local businesses such. But motor fuel tax is another way to spread out that that we just voted on. I don't want to drag business away from Cordova. But we've got to make the budget. So I will reluctantly vote in favor of this, but I would like to maybe look at some exemptions on this.
I'm not sure which James made that second, but you're up.
Good, Burton. So I'm fine with this one. I think the cap is, is, you know, stands, stands to reason that we raise it. I've heard opposition against raising it for primarily two industries. One is home building and, and home packages, construction packages and things like that. The second is engine sales. Those are kind of our two big tickets items that we've, we've talked about. And I would be totally on board with exempting those specific types of things from the new cap. The purpose of, you know, when we're talking about construction packages or, or building homes or things of that nature, that is going to directly come back to us on a property tax. If somebody develops a piece of property or builds another house or builds a warehouse or enhances their own property or whatever else. I mean, sure, give them the break upfront because the tax assessor, that's not our job. But the assessor is going to, to, to see that and capture some sort of property tax in the package. So I'd be totally fine with that. And on the marine engine sales, I don't think there's enough of them to where that is, is a big impact to this ordinance. So I'm still in favor of it. And, you know, we can talk about other exemptions at some other point, but I would be in favor of doing that.
Okay, next, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'm, I'm most opposed. Out of all the ordinances, this one is the one I'm most opposed to. I think this will drive business out of our local economy. We've heard from many business owners in town, not just those who sell home packages and engines. But, you know, there's, Bill Weber is in here. You got Jerry Blackler. That, you know, you're, you're going to drive business out of town if we pass this. I know four hundred and fifty bucks doesn't seem like a lot to many of us around the table, but to some people it might be. You know, you're going to drive grocery sales more than already go up to Anchorage. There's already plenty that go up there, but you're going to drive more of them up there. You're going to drive people to buy reels and level lines and power rollers down to Petroselcas instead of getting them from Webmar. You're, I mean, you're going to drive boat projects away from Jerry's new building that he's paying for. I'm just completely opposed to raising the cap. If this does pass, I hope that we will consider the exemptions for, you know, that have been stated already. But, yeah, I just have a tough time with this one and I really hope that we, this doesn't go forward. We have other options available with our fish tax being budgeted low, lower than average. Thank you.
Councilmember Beadle?
Yeah, I, I kind of think we're headed the wrong way with this. Instead of giving a, what do you call it, carbon on everything, you know, the sale. I think it was originally intended for engines and houses and, you know, not for apartments or, I mean, hotels and cars and, you know, making it a monthly thing. I, I'd rather just leave the thing alone and massage what shouldn't be included in it. You know, there's plenty of groceries, you know. Yeah, so I, I, I would rather see it defined what single sale. And, you know, as Mr. Myers come in and talk to somebody tries to bundle a, a stay or a group or something, you know, whenever I travel, they don't, you, you pay your, your rate. You don't put the whole group in there. But I, I agree with Mr. Jones. You know, even four hundred and fifty bucks on a seventy-five hundred dollar item, you know, now you're at eight grand and you can, there's other outfits that you can get it, you can get it here. There's other ways to get things here. So, yeah. You know, I'd like to see it massaged a little better before we just go straight forward with a, a flat single sales cap. And like Mr. Burton said on the houses and stuff, there's other revenues to collect. You know, you, you want to promote as much as you can home building because they're not going to go anywhere. You're going to get your property tax out of them. But I, I'd rather see something that says what, what isn't, what isn't exempt from a sales tax cap instead of just everything being at a cap. So I'm going to vote no on this, just, or would it be a time for an amendment? Would that be too much to be a, a first reading then? It would be a, have to start over?
We've got sixty-one days, so if you want to make an amendment, make it.
What would be a rewriting is basically look at what shouldn't be exempt or what shouldn't be covered under the seal of the single sales cap.
I think probably an exemption ordinance would be more appropriate than trying to write all of that into this particular ordinance. But that's my personal opinion. I don't know. Maybe Manager Allen is.
I guess I, I would just have to, you, you'd have to figure out in another session what particular exemptions you want. Do, you know, is it motors? Is it whatever? Is it fuel? Whatever it is. I, I would offer this to you. I think this one of all of them is an enforcement issue to some degree. What I've seen is sales over a period of time are bundled into a single invoice months later that only applies, the, the sales tax cap only applies to that one time instead of at the time that the sale takes place. So I would have to refresh myself on state sales tax law and our code and enable to, that's part of the enforcement mechanism that I'm talking about. And if you, if you do not pass this ordinance versus saying that you'd like to see improved enforcement, I think that's one of the places where you will see us be fairly aggressive in terms of state law and our own code and how we deal with those sales. I mean, if you buy it today, you have to pay taxes on it today. And if that exceeds three thousand, then you get it. But next week, if you buy another item, you can't bundle those together, in my opinion, in my knowledge, and pay sales tax on that one time. And that's probably one of the large avoidance techniques that are happening in this community. And so we have to get really aggressive on that, that enforcement.
I think that's kind of what I'm going at and defining, you know, what was the intent of this exemptions, I mean, the, the cap. We were seeing motors being bought out of town. You have brick and mortar businesses here trying to do business, competing with, I mean, it was cheaper than paying the six percent sales tax on that whole thing. So I'd rather see like, you know, I mean, is there, like I mentioned earlier, the, the hotels, you know, is there a reason that they got exempted all of a sudden? I mean, you know, I was, I was thinking it was more for...
John, I, I don't know the answer to all of these things, but, I mean, this is a very complicated matter in terms of convenience. If you need, if you need product A today to go fishing and the tax goes up, costs you another two hundred and forty dollars for that item, are you going to wait two weeks to have it shipped from Anchorage or are you going to buy it? If you, if you, I mean, there's, there's the law of necessity. There's the law of convenience. There's a lot of things... There's a lot of things that go into this. So I would say a blanket determination that this tax cap is going to drive a bunch of business out of here. You know, I, I don't know the answer to that, but I, I think there would be, there's a tendency to overestimate the impact those things are going to have. And I speak, I speak from experience in terms of a state, several states that have, when you look at your tax receipt, tax one, tax two, tax three, tax four on their sales tax. Because not only do they have, they have the state sales tax, they have a county sales tax, they have a local sales tax, and there might be a special district TIF tax on there. And based upon what you're doing in that community, whether it's a resort community and you're having fun, you know, I don't see too many people going in and say, oh, I'm not going to buy that t-shirt because it's $3.20 instead of $3.12, you know. So, so, and, and I realize that that's not the exact comparison, but I, I don't know what impact is going to be prevalent here. I think what would happen is if you pass this ordinance and you pass the motor vehicle fuel tax and these things, a year from now, we're going to know what our experience is. If our sales tax goes down, then we've made a mistake. And if our sales tax goes up, then we can say that the impact was not as great as we determined. If our, if our sales tax goes down, then we'll know one year from now that we have to readjust and we have to have, we have to have the courage and we have to have the, the desire to make those corrections every time we need to instead of letting stuff stand pat.
Councilmember Wees, did you have a round one?
Uh, yeah, I could, I, I would definitely be a lot more willing to pass this if I saw a exemption for buildings, building materials. We've had it very practically put out. We're going to, we're going to see, we're going to see revenue each year on the backend for, for a property tax. And, and I, I really like how we're, we're talking about more enforcement here. Enforcement tax code, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's definitely a problem. And we've got a lot of vendors that, that just aren't, aren't on the books at all. And, and we're going to be paying for that. You know, I'm, I'm a Cordova and I'm, I'm not going anywhere for a long time. We're, we're going to figure out how to do this or, or I'm going to tax myself. That's how I split. Um, I'm, everyone's going to pay or I'm going to put it on myself sooner or later. Uh, as well as, uh, I, yeah, I would, I would also go as far as to say engine purchases for, for boat owners, um, uh, not raise that cap. And this, this would be a lot easier for me to stomach, but, uh, but I do really appreciate the direction I'm going with, uh, tax enforcement here.
Thank you. I too, um, agree with Manager Lanning that this is probably one of the, this and, and resale is, is one of the, two of the most abused sections of our, of our tax thing. And I think that raising the cap eliminates some of that. I, I think I've said it before that I would actually be in favor of getting rid of the cap to get rid of all of those abuses, but that's not what's proposed here. So I'm in favor of this. I too would, would support very specific exemptions tied to, tied to billing permits, exemptions or a reduction in the cap, however you want to look at that. I don't believe that this is going to affect as much as some people have let on. But I know that it does affect some people somewhat. And for those folks, I'm willing to work, work with it on the exemption side of things. But I, I think the abuse is just too high with, with combining things. And, you know, our, our tax code is pretty clear that the taxes per item, per, per time, not, you know, it doesn't even count if I buy $5,000 worth of gas and another 3,000 worth of, worth of oil. That's, that's two separate items that are taxed separately is from the way I read the code and discussed it with folks previously. So anyway, regarding this particular ordinance, I support it and I would be willing to look at those specific exemptions or lack thereof, as, as Councilmember Beadle has said, to work on that code in the next couple of months. But for, for this particular reading, I support this. So round two, Mr. Jones, Councilmember Jones, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just, you know, we're talking about raising it from 180 bucks to 450 bucks. And, yeah, that might not seem, $270 might not seem like a big increase. The thing is, 450 bucks buys you to go on the ferry. And the cost of goods is already cheaper elsewhere, no matter what. Um, there's rarely an item that's cheaper in Cordova than it is elsewhere, even salmon. So, you know, I, I think it will drive business out of town. It might not be as much as I think, but, um, I can fit a lot of stuff in a box truck for 450 bucks on a ferry or in a pickup with a canopy or spend it on freight up here from Seattle. Um, yeah, I'm looking at repowering my bow picker in the next three years and they're 12 grand apiece. I have to pay an extra 500 bucks per engine. Like you're saying, it's per item, not per sales. Probably ship it up from Seattle. It's, it's going to hurt the economy in this town and I want to try to grow the economy, not hinder it. And I would like to see us focus more on enforcement of the current cap, see how far we can get with that before we just go and raise it. Thank you.
Councilmember Beadle, you had your hand up?
Yes. You're absolutely right. In season, I need it. Then fish are moving. They ain't waiting. I'll buy it. I'll eat it. But I'm not going to make plans. Or if I do have to replace my engine, I'll do it after the season. And like Mr. Jones said, I'll look at my options. I do buy a lot of stuff in Cordova. I'm from Cordova. But what I do find totally unacceptable is, hey, we'll find out in a year if it works or not. These businessmen out here in the community, a year is a long time for them to find out it didn't work and then try to make it up. So I think that's pretty, uh, a broad stroke to take on their, you know, on their wallet. But I would, I would like to look at, um, you know, seeing what should be included rather than, uh, anyway, so that, that's, I can't, I, I think it got out of hand and, um, you know, I like the idea of the 3,000. The idea was to keep businesses down and grow it. But I think it got taken over the hotel and a t-shirt or something. I don't, you know, I don't know where they do that. But I, I see Mr. Blackler, when he does a job and he, you know, does he, how does he, does he break down everything he does? Or is the job include, you know, I have a carpenter build me a house. I don't specify install the windows, put a roof on. I, package deal. So, I don't know. I think it could be massaged a little better to, to keep business in town. And without the exemptions on, you know, I think, I think the, the difference is going to be made out. You know, not such a broad thing that it's easy to abuse. So, but in its form right now, I can't, I can't go for it.
Well, I think I, you know, I'm, I'm still fairly near. So my question would be beyond, beyond engines, boats and building packages. I understand a building package, if it's sold as a building package, comes up in a package, whatever. How many items are sold that are over $3,000 if you exclude those items? And those are the things that, that I, you know, I don't have a full handle on. My t-shirt quip was just an example of, there are certain times and conditions when those additional costs just don't matter to the sale because of necessity or convenience and those kinds of things. And I was just sort of wondering out loud what kind of impact that would have. Now, the other thing about a year from now, I was just, I was using that as a budget year, but you know, we know quarterly what's happening with our, with our taxes. And I guess my point in all of that is, um, I'd rather make a one-year mistake than a long-term mistake. And it, it does, this sales tax doesn't come out of any business's pocket. It's the consumer that pays the sales tax. And the consumer makes the determination about whether or not it's a valid amount.
Just like Mr. Jones said, and now the business didn't, now the business didn't happen in Cordova. The consumer says, I can go to Anchorage. I could have dinner and watch a movie. I can get my stuff cheaper. Now the brick and mortar that's paying more for fuel, that's got to still pay electricity and employees, lost that sale. And we're talking about 450 bucks. You know, they might be talking about, you know, a, a grand. So the impact, the impact for the, the business is considerably more. And every time I buy a gillnet, it's, um, it's five to 7,500 bucks. You know, so that's, that's one small part of my, well, actually a big part of my business. Without it, I wouldn't. But, so there is a lot of, I single purchase items that do fall under that. And I start thinking 500 here, 500 there. You know, I'm, I'm a businessman too. These, you know, I, I got to start looking where I can start cutting. And if it costs me too much to do business in Cordova, I, I will look elsewhere. I mean, I like, I live here and that's, but I still got to survive.
And the, the other aspect that I think applies here is the, is the private, personal part of this versus the business, commercial tax write-off that's available for businesses that, that purchase items and pay taxes on the items they purchase because those are all, you can write those all off in your federal income tax as well.
For now.
For now. For now.
I got enough deductions. I don't need any more.
So I, I'm just trying to, what I'm trying to point out is when we, when we estimate the impact, we're not careful not to overestimate the impact with the things that we think. Because you have to base some of this based on experience. And, you know, I, I want to be careful to assure everybody, I'm not advocating for taxes in any way, shape or form. I want to put a budget together and I want to keep the services running in Cordova to the standards that the people of Cordova anticipate and expect.
Mr. Allison?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so maybe I'm misunderstanding the code then. It sounds like this is specifically per item because I always thought it was per transaction. Like if I go to the grocery store and buy 10 grand worth of groceries, it's capped out at 3,000. Is that not the case?
No, it, it's a, it's a single purchase.
So it's...
You could buy a thousand items in that single purchase, but it's a single purchase.
Okay.
The, the, the issue that I, I think that I'm aware of is multiple purchases over the course of a month, and then an invoice comes at the end of the month bundling all of those individual purchases into one sale.
Yeah, I've definitely seen those.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the enforcement issue. And again, I'll go back to, you know, if we're going to go down this road, everybody has to be prepared for what happens afterwards.
So I would go on to say then, you know, this is going to hit a lot more than just boat engines and, and, uh, building packages. This is going to hit guys who are building nets, you know, a net's over five grand every day of the week. And there's 576 permit holders. And if each of us built a net in a year, it's, you know, an extra 500 bucks and some that's already 5,500, you know, that's 8%. That's, if I can get it somewhere else or, you know, buy my web from LFS in Seattle and then ship it up instead of buying it off the shelf here in Cordova, 450 bucks, I could have somebody hang me a net for 450 bucks. So, you know, it's worth the savings. Um, you have seine's. Yeah, it's, that's going to be a 10 to 20 grand just to repair a seine. Um, you're going to have tenders, uh, you know, fishing boats, buying groceries. There's pretty much every year, a couple of times a year, because I'm doing so many fisheries now that I spend more than $3,000 in one run of AC or in nickels. And I, I could choose to send my truck with one of my deckhands up to Costco and get everything else substantially cheaper. But I've been choosing to take my business and do it in Cordova. And I try to split it up between the two groceries. Um, I'm just one example of that. You know, I, I do think that there's a lot of things that this will hit and it's going to drive business out of town. Um, on the other hand, there are some things that, you know, maybe should have a cap, like if I pay rent for a whole year at one time, you know, it's, you know, that's supposed to be done monthly. That's one way to scam the system. If I, you know, like you said, have my bill, it's okay, just keep one slip and I'll come in and charge every day for the whole month and at the end of the month, run my car. It's, you know, it's, there's definitely some abuses that go on with our current code. And I, I just, you know, I think this is going to drive business out of town, like I've said a million times already. And I think that we should focus more on the enforcement side than on just raising the, the cap.
Councilmember Gardner?
We have no issue with enforcement, but enforcement is an unknown quantity yet. And we don't know what that is to fill the hole we have in the budget yet. And the budget we've got is not a fat budget. It's a bare bone budget. We've cut the schools by 26% or funding to the schools by 26%. We've got no money in for maintenance. We've got no money in for any kind of cushion. We've got no money in for supplies or training for any of our staff. I mean, it's a bare bones budget. And now we're talking about wanting to whack down our bare bone budget more.
Round 2.53? Anybody have any new to add? Guys on the phone, anything new to add?
Nothing really new. Just, you know, reiterating comments I made. And it's just that the sales tax cap doesn't affect the day-to-day shopper. And, you know, Mr. Jones has come up with some, some good points on where it, it does impact, whether it's a seine being rebuilt or a gillnet being made or things like that. Those are all business, business deductions for, for commercial fishermen. But this is, you know, going shopping, the people that live in Cordova that are going to go down and get some groceries for the week are going to spend 3,000 or $7,500 on food. So it's, I think it's, it's a little bit misleading some of the comments, though the intention is good, I'm sure. It's just, it's not exactly, um, probably as bad as what they're trying to suggest.
Okay, there being no objection, then we'll have the clerk call the rule on 11:59?
Hi, Josh. How questions absent? James Burton?
Yeah.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Robert Beadle?
No.
David Allison?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
No.
James Wees?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-2.
Okay, ordinance 1160, an ordinance of the city council, the city... An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, amending Cordova Municipal Code, Chapter 5.40, to repeal CMC 5.40.090, eliminating the compensatory collection discount from sales tax on second reading.
So moved.
Seconded.
They moved and seconded. Councilmember Beagle?
Call the question.
Question called, is there any objection? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I've said it in the past, and I just want to say it again, that these businesses have costs associated with collecting the sales tax for us. You know, the majority of the sales in this day and age are done via credit card. There's credit card fees that gets charged on the taxes that are collected. It blows the compensation out of the water as to what costs these businesses are taking on, just in credit card fees alone. This is one, one way that we can be good stewards of a partnership with these business owners, just to give them a little bit of a break on the amount that they're spending to collect tax on our behalf. And so I'll be voting no, and I hope that you guys will consider that as well. Thank you.
Is there objection? Hearing none, the clerk can call the rule on 1160.
Robert Beadle?
Yes.
David Allison?
Yes.
James Wees?
Where's that beat?
Sorry about that, you're no.
Josh Halquist is absent. Jeff Gard?
Yes.
James Burton?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
No.
Ordinance passes 4-2.
Okay, that brings us up to unfinished business. I don't see anything listed. No miscellaneous business pending agenda calendar? elected appointed officials list? How is the, are we getting any interest in the boards and commissions that are firing this month?
They'll just have two letters of interest.
So, anybody out there in radio land, we need planning commission members, library commission members, what, harbor, harbor commission, planning commission?
I don't have it with me.
All of them are having one, two, or three expire this month, so. We need some, some public to help. Mr. Lightning.
Hi, Florence, I'm here speaking of boards and commissions. I just got a call today from Shirley Marquardt, the governor's office, and there is an open position in the, it's called the MTAB. It's the Marine Transportation Advisory Board, and they're kind of, well, they're very interested in having a Cordova member, because this is the Alaska Marine Highway System. So, if anybody's interested in that, we're gonna put that up on our website. Kathy from the chamber is gonna send it out tomorrow as well. But I do, there's supposed to be an application online on the governor's webpage for this. Kathy indicated she could not find it today, but we'll try to provide a link on our website. And if you have any questions, feel free to stop in and I'll point you in the right direction. But it's, they want it done as quickly as possible.
Is that different from the board that Clay has served on before and Joyce had served on before?
No, I think this is the same one, but Dave Regiani decided that he did not want to continue on that board, so there is a vacant, and it's fairly immediate. They haven't had any luck.
So, anybody interested in that would certainly help Cordova to have a voice on that board. Anything else on the pending agenda, calendar? What's the budget schedule at this point in time? Oh, go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, I guess I would like to see the Adam Street Sidewalk Project back on the agenda. I might be committing political suicide here, but I don't know the, I don't know the procedure for bringing something back for reconsideration, if there's statute limitations on that or not, but I voted for the, in the affirmative for that project. And if we're gonna be raising new taxes, I don't think we can afford to spend $250,000 on a sidewalk. We can't even fund our schools fully, so.
Yeah. That money, as you recall, is appropriated, appropriated out of the permanent fund and not the general fund. I don't know, I'd have to ask Hollywood what would be that procedure, but I can have that for you next time.
Thank you.
So, what is the budget schedule at this point in time?
Well, my, my plan would be that we'd have another full discussion. I'll go back and redo the numbers. You have a, you have a full copy in your packet. Some of those numbers are gonna change, you know. But we'll, we'll redo the numbers. I will try to predict enforcement estimates in terms of the code. And then we'll come to you with a full budget next time, and then the next two meetings, and probably the first reading, we'll have the first reading of it in December, the first meeting in December. If we decide that perhaps next council meeting in November, if we decide we need to have a special session, then we can schedule those as we go, but that's a schedule. Three more meetings, three, two, is it two readings the budget got to do, or is it one?
I think it's two.
Two. So, the, the plan is to have the two readings in December.
Okay, anything else on the pending agenda?
So, the, the square five gives us one more meeting in November to make any adjustments to any.
Yeah, I'm gonna make those adjustments. I hope, I'll, I'll try really hard to get out a new budget to you tomorrow, but the one you see in your packet is fairly close, the 54,000. And then the adjustment we're gonna make is, you'll see a change, probably the change will be in the sales tax number. It will go up because of enforcement estimates, and that, you'll see where you are. And then, depending upon that one, that number is either we're gonna have a balanced budget, or we're gonna have a slight overage. And then that overage will be available for discussion, or I'll put it in some line items where I think we really have some needs. We, you know, we have some fire department things that we need to cover and weren't in the budget that could be covered, and a few other items like that, so I can move it around and tell you where I put it, and then we can have a discussion about that if you like. That would be the plan.
And I guess from, from my perspective, as far as making changes, you know, if we, if it comes to the point of needing to make changes at the last meeting of December, as long as we've got December 30th and December 31st, we can have two more meetings if it so was needed. So, I don't think we, we can tie ourselves to, you know, obviously make changes. The sooner we, sooner we have an idea what changes we want to make, we, we need to do those, but we don't have to have a budget until the end of the year.
Right.
Anything else on the pending agenda, calendar? Hearing none, then we'll move along. Go ahead, Ken.
Just, yeah, maybe next work session we have, maybe we can take one more, just quick look at some of the exemptions. It was a pretty short list we had, I know there's a lot more than that, so. And I've seen it before, I can, I can dig it up out of my files at home.
Yeah. This, this one is your best one, the, the memo from Kara, from May 16th, is probably the best one, because that one has everyone listed, and I just put a copy on your desk, has everyone listed any amounts associated with it, the revenues. So, it's, it has a pretty good memo right there.
Yeah, I think the one I wanted to look at mainly was the resale products. And, yeah, so, just another conversation on that. I didn't get this email, so I didn't have time to prepare for that discussion.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I thought they sent it to you last week, but sorry if I didn't.
Must have missed it.
Okay.
So, sorry about that.
I don't, I didn't understand it either.
I may not have sent it out, I thought I did, but sorry.
Yeah, and, yeah, I think that's it.
All right.
One other. Councilmember Gardner?
I know we have a lot of exempt property in Cordova. As far as state and federal government buildings and stuff that are non-taxable for property tax, but there was an idea floated the other day that talked about having a, instead of a tax, a service fee for buyer and lease service. Is that something that's legally done?
I don't know the answer to that. So, you were saying a fee for service charge?
Not a tax.
For all the other governments? Okay, I'll look into it.
While they're getting fire protection, they're getting police coverage, you know, public safety?
Yeah. I'll look into it. I just don't know the answer.
Okay.
There's a bunch of that that's, I mean, it's already been tried in Alaska statute and stuff, but they're exempting. I mean, it's really hard. I, I want to go where you're going, but the, the.
I'm trying.
The feds, the, the state and the feds are making their rules that we have to live by, so. You know, and that's, I see freight on here and stuff, you know, cargo, you know, you don't charge, there's no taxes on cargo, you know, on freight, so. I mean, it's a nice number, but, yeah, but since statute.
Okay, last call on the pending agenda. Hearing none, then we'll move along to, I think we're on audience participation, yeah? Audience participation, anybody have any comment on anything, whether it be on the agenda or not?
Comments? So, Kristen Carpenter again, just as a individual or community member. I keep talking to these things without getting too close. I want to touch on a few points. One is, it frustrates me a lot seeing this discussion, hearing this discussion tonight, and thinking about the fact that I don't think any of us are paying any less in federal taxes, but all of us in a lot of ways are seeing less of that tax revenue come back to this community. And it used to come back in forms like the Secure Rural Schools Program, which spent money in this town and funded work to be done. I think probably it affects things like solid waste. Federal transportation dollars aren't coming through as much, so I just urge you to think about that, urge you to think about, you know, there might be other ways that it affects you that I'm not thinking of, because I'm just thinking of what affects me. But I think we should all be talking to our delegation about that and just saying, this money, not having this money really hurts, because I can think of projects like the culvert that we just replaced out on the Cock River Highway at mile 20, that was a half a million dollar project, and we contracted out, so we were putting local contractors to work, they have crews that they keep busy. So, that's a big job, and that, that stuff adds up. So, again, I would say we should all be talking to the delegation and, and talking about the ways that that affects everybody in this community, or each of us, I should say. I want to say I do support the measures that council adopted tonight, because I, from what I've seen from my time in the seats that you now occupy, it's really tough, because the city's asking staff to be so frugal. And I think, for example, the, the refuse department, aren't they dealing with like a 20-year-old garbage truck? I know that's an enterprise fund and that's based on user fees, but that's gonna have to be replaced at some point. And, and to the extent that you, that, that, that we keep cutting and cheaping our way out, we're not doing ourselves favors in the, in the long term, I'm afraid. So, it's tough. I know there aren't any easy answers. And I thank you for the time that you put in tonight and thinking about these challenges. And I know it's hard when you clash a little bit with people that you see in the community every day, but that's the point of community dialogue, so I really appreciate everybody putting in the work. And finally, I just want to talk about the Salmon Jam event that we have in the summer. It sounds like the city is working on doing more for event promotion, and I welcome that 100%. We, I'm not as involved with organizing the Salmon Jam music part, the Friday night and Saturday night, but I think that brings 800 to 900 people per night up to the ski hill, which is big. And then the Salmon Runs event that I do run, we bring in 70 runners from out of town, so that's people coming to run in the marathon or any of the other events, and they bring their family and they stay in local lodging. And I do almost no advertising. I mean, I, I make sure the event is listed in a couple of calendars in a couple of key places, but I welcome any support from the city or the chamber to help with doing event promotions, because I think it's really popular. I think people want to come to a small town, they want a small-town experience. They come because the super dedicated people want to run a marathon in every state, and they can tag Alaska with our event. So, there's, I think there's still quite a, a bit of market out there that we're not really even reaching. So, thanks very much, and thanks again for your time.
Thank you, Kristen. Figure out how to make it a week-long event and keep the same number of people coming. Any other audience participation, come on up.
Don Sco in North Starlumber. I guess I'm kind of confused on the sales tax cap thing now. Are you guys gonna pursue with enforcement or not? Because I never really did figure that out. If you're not gonna pursue with enforcement, why should I pay mine? Because I'm competing with two guys that are paying nothing. And now you just hurt me more by passing the sales tax cap higher. So, let's think about what we're doing, guys. Thanks.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah, one of the things we did talk about tonight that I think was pretty generally accepted was that we need to do some exempt.
That's why I was wondering if you guys are gonna go forward and relook at that stuff?
Yep.
Or what we're gonna do here? Because actually, I don't like to say this, but if you give me the sales tax cap at a lower, I'm the only one that you're getting it back from on the property tax. Please keep that in mind when you think about that. And I do sell a lot of roof packages, they're right around $4,000, four to $5,000. And for the difference in the, the sales tax cap, they can get it out of Anchorage cheaper. So, there are some things on the building side of that that we really need to look at. Appreciate it.
I think from council's perspective, Donna, is, is, from what I got anyway, is that yes, enforcement is going to be looked at a lot more seriously and, and done more, and that our intent is to look at the exemptions in detail. You know, I can't tell you what exemptions.
There's a ton of them.
We're gonna, we're gonna discuss all of them.
Like you say, there are people that, they keep everything for a month and then bill it out. My system isn't set up that way. I bill it out every day. So, when somebody comes in and gets a roof, they come back three days later, oh jeez, I forgot my tar paper. Sorry, you already got your exemption. And then the other thing, too, is when people come into the lumberyard, is they don't realize that they try to buy tools and stuff, tools are not exempt. The only thing that is exempt is what stays permanently in that structure. So, I do, it, it helps my business a lot, so I really pay attention to what I do down there, because I don't want to lose it. It means the world to that little business, so. When you guys do this, I would like, try to stay notified of what's going on with it, because there is some stuff that we need to fine-tune on the sales tax caps, so.
And it's not just the building materials business, there's the repair business, there's sale of new marine engines, there are things we want to make sure that we don't stab ourselves in the foot with, but.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of them, and I, there's some other ones that, as far as I'm concerned, I don't see how they ever got in there, but they're there, and I think we need to just rework the whole thing and come up with another plan.
You're on the committee. Sure. Ken, oh, come on up, Wendy.
Wendy Rainey, a community member. I appreciate the time and dedication it takes to, to make these kind of decisions, but I really ask that you guys educate yourselves as to all the businesses in the community, not just those things associated with boats and fishing. It takes a lot of. It takes a lot of businesses to get a community like this together, and the tax cap is cutting the nose despite the face. When you talk about bringing in events, every single one of those events is gonna be hit by that. You talk about people coming in and buying packages for a week in Cordova, that's hit by that, and it hurts. Right now, you have a population of two thousand supporting an infrastructure for ten thousand in the summer, and we really can't take much more. You've taxed us to the max, and we're busting out with nowhere to go, nowhere left to go. So I'm asking you guys to be creative and look to some long-term stabilization and not jump on the taxation bandwagon. It's really, really hurting the Cordova businesses that are trying to stay here year-round, that are trying to keep the money in town, and are trying to keep, keep things rolling forward. An event planner, you know, we really need to look at what we have. We have a Chamber of Commerce that can be utilized, bring them into the Cordova Center and partner with them. You know, we have three enforcement agencies in this community not working together. There are other areas where we can look to save money and be creative, and I, I really hope that, that people are looking that direction. You know, people are leaving town because it's too expensive to live here. Some of the things that draw people here are the schools. We keep taking money away from the schools, it's not gonna be a drag to this community. You're, you're not enticing businesses when you raise the taxes that those businesses have to pay in order to survive. It's not gonna entice new businesses to come to Cordova. So be, I just, I just think you need to be really careful and not pull too much from things that could draw businesses and families to this community when you're pulling, and be very careful with the taxes, because right now, it's really tough. It's really tough to run a business when all three measures that you voted on tonight are gonna affect it. You know, educate yourself with some of the other businesses that might be outside your comfort level and not what you're personally involved in when you think about doing these taxations and these measures, and make sure that you're not alienating some of the businesses in Cordova that are major players. Every business in town is an important business, but you're really hurting some with some of these measures you're enacting. So I thank you, and I, I just hope that you guys are looking at the big picture and, and getting educated about all the businesses in Cordova when you're making these decisions. Thank you.
Anybody else for audience comments?
Chris Bolden, six oh seven Berd Street. First, I'd like to speak as the city mechanic. I agree with Kristen Carpenter, we have a very slim-trimmed budget. I know Jeff has stated several times that we have no money put away for new equipment. Right now, I have two broken-down refuse vehicles. You know, we have a loader that could be replaced. Several of these are high-dollar items, you know, several hundred thousand dollars. So I just wanted to express my concern on that with the 2020 budget, you know, we need to be putting money aside. I know some of these are enterprise funds, but we're biting ourselves in, in the, in the butt by not doing this and trying to pinch our way along. It, it doesn't add up, you know, from a repair perspective and, and cost-effective way. And then also, as a citizen, I like to hear about the tax enforcement. Just yesterday, I was at the grocery store and, you know, seen a family member from someone who's already been in trouble for tax evasion, you know, buy some groceries taxed at exempt, and I just don't see why or how. So, appreciate you guys' time, I know you guys are having to make some hard decisions, so, thank you.
Any other audience comments? Seeing none, then we'll go on to council comments. We'll start on the phone, James Wies.
Yeah, first of all, thank you, everybody, for showing up. I'd extend a congratulations to Mr. Rogers and the, and the water crew for, for their, I'm not sure if it was an award or a recognition, for their best efforts on the LT2 project. That's, that's pretty awesome to hear. Also, thank you, uh, thank you, Wendy Rainey, for, for showing up and speaking, and part of this is, you know, to anyone shows up, who shows up and spread the word, I think Bank Council has, has made a pretty good effort to, to extend invitations for people to, to come and educate us, because, because we, I think we all know that we don't know it all, and I, I do feel like our council is, is, is reaching out on social media and stuff like that to try and, try and get these broad-based opinions and hear, hear your concerns, because there are concerns, too. Finally, thank you, thank you, Don, for coming in again, and as, as he said, for the first, for the third time in a row attending, he's got, he's got two competitors that aren't paying taxes. Let's, uh, let's get a cease and desist for these businesses, or let's, let's, let's start with the guy that's come in, come in three times and, and ask what we're gonna do. I don't, I don't know what that looks like, but it's, it's right in our face every council meeting, and this is, I hope this is something we can help them with. Anyway, thank you, everyone, for your best time and efforts. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, James. James Burton?
I just wanna thank everybody in the audience that is there and participating, whether they're just a nag of listener or got up and spoke, can't see everybody, but thanks for being there. And I do wanna just echo all of James' comments, I think he, he's spot on with, you know, the enforcement side of things and knowing that there's things we need to put a stop to. So I hope we do something about it soon. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, thanks, everybody, for coming out. Hopefully you can make the next one, it's so much fun, and, yeah, I don't know how the World Series ended, but...
Five to one Houston, I think that ended.
So, yeah, sorry for missing that. Thank you, Mr. Lanning, for all the efforts you put forward, and I'm glad that you had a good trip back home, or back to your family, and glad to have you back, hopefully they'll come, too. And I just wanna thank the rest of the council for putting up with me for another one, and, yeah, a little disappointed with how things went with these tax ordinances, but we'll work on it for the third reading.
Councilmember Beadle?
Yeah, I just agree with, you know, everything that's been said so far, and, and it's really nice to say, to all you guys out there in TV land watching, it's awesome, we're moving forward. You stole my thunder on the Astros, gonna try and change them, but it's, it's really hard. I, I think we do have other options, too, and we've got a lot to learn, so when you come up and say something, please do, it's, and, you know, if you do think of a solution, too, though, you know, fund me is, you know, it's, would love to, but is there, is there other thoughts or options on how to do that? And if we fund somebody, who, you know, who are we gonna cut? You see it here, is everybody's, it's really hard, so, and without any solutions, somebody's gonna get cut, funding ain't gonna happen, and so, you're thinking of things that we could do, too, to make it work, it's, it's our community. Have a good weekend and hope to see you at the volleyball games.
Councilmember Gergen?
I'd just like to thank everybody in the audience that came today. I know sometimes crowding council along kinda feels like you're herding turtles, but we can use all the herding you can give us, we need all the input and help we can get. So thank you very much for coming and your inputs.
Okay, and I just got a few comments. I'd like to thank council members Beadle and Jones for, for sticking to your, to your guns on the, the tax issues. Nobody likes taxes, I don't necessarily prefer taxes, but my goal, I think, is to spread those taxes out as best we can, and, and any further taxes such as possible personal property tax or fish tax, it's been discussed, the only way I would be in favor of those is, is, as a trade-off for real property taxes. As I've stated in the past, I do support those other taxes to, to spread the burden out, but it would be only to, to reduce the, the burden to the, the people who are here year-round, or own property in Cordova. Regarding the school funding, it was, comments were made that we cut the school funding to the bone and that they're, they're hurt by it, as, as, as I have seen and heard from their budget and such, we didn't combine second, third grade, we didn't, you know, cut three teachers out of the high school, the, the school board made it work with what they had, albeit they had to use reserves. I believe that this council supports the schools in full, and had you come back and said our services are going to dwindle because of this, and we're gonna have to combine a couple of elementary school grades and, and get rid of a shop program in, in the high school, then I, I think our discussion would've, would've continued and, and gone, and it will in, in the future, you know, if, if next year you don't have reserves to, to make the school funding, then, then I believe that this council will do what it takes to, to get those schools the funding that they need. And, and again, as I stated before, I appreciate the work that the school board has done to, to make their budget work with, with what we had allocated to them, but as with any negotiations, just because one number's allocated, if that does not work for you, then tell us that that does not work for you, and, and we'll move on, but, but as it is, you know, as I understand it anyway, the, the budget that the school has for this year did not adversely affect the programs that they were, they are providing to our schools, and I'd like to congratulate our, our staff for their EPA award, I think that was, although it wasn't cheap, it is well-deserved, they, they work hard to, to make our, our community work the way that it does, and regarding the budget in, in, in full, it was discussed a little bit tonight by a couple of council members, that possible permanent fund earnings could be used for a portion of our budget, or increase some of the revenue projections to make that balance, and I don't know where we're at as far as making that balance now. Fifty-six thousand might be able to be made up pretty easily with enforcement, et cetera, but as I've stated again before, when the windfall, and I do consider a windfall, fourth receipts were received for a number of years for the schools, though all of that money went to the schools, that allowed the city to put money into their permanent fund, and it was specifically put into the permanent fund with the thought that at some point in time, we might have to use some of that to pay back the bonds. So if it takes that, and we have at least five other council members or the mayor that are willing to, to do that, I would still support taking some of those earnings to pay some of those school bonds back, because it was specifically put in there, and in retrospect, maybe we should've created some other fund for school bond repayment rather than putting that money into the permanent fund, which requires six months to take out, but I don't wanna spend permanent fund money any more than anybody else does. I'm keenly aware that our reserves in our general reserve fund are not the six months we would like it to be, we're well short of that, and we do need to build that back up as well, but regarding balancing the budget, I'm not in favor of any more taxes other than collecting those that are being gotten away from through maluse or malfeasance of, of collection efforts or whatever you wanna call it there, but a lack of enforcement, but we need to get on that enforcement and get some more money out, but anyway, if it takes it to balance the budget, and I have, and there's other support on the council for it, I would be in favor of taking whatever fifty or hundred thousand to balance the budget out of the permanent fund to pay the school bonds back, so. Anyway, thank you all for coming. We do have an executive session tonight, it shouldn't be very long, I don't believe, but you know, every time you say that, it takes longer than you want it to, so. So anyway, that being said, we need a motion to go into executive session to discuss contractual issues regarding the hospital with Kristen and Scott.